Good evening. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on July 1st. This is a regular scheduled meeting tonight.
Speaker?
Yes, I will do my best to make sure that everybody can hear me. That was our first order of business tonight, which is calling to order. The second order of business is the pledge of allegiance. If you could scan with me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that takes us on to item three, which is the roll call. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with Member Piper.
Here.
Chairman Tuckfield.
Here.
Member Posey.
Here.
Member DeCosta. Note that he is absent, and Member Lawson. All members are present except for Member DeCosta.
Very good. Before we go any further, I'd like to entertain a motion to exclude Member DeCosta from any roll call votes.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Posey. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Item four is to address any conflicts of interest. As you know, this is a relatively new item on our agenda. I'm going to do it a little bit differently today. I'm going to have Dawn call the roll, and if you have any conflicts with any of the items on our agenda tonight, please signify by saying yes. If you have no conflicts, please signify by saying no. Dawn, could you please call the roll?
Yes. I will start with myself. No. Member Posey?
No.
Tuckfield?
No.
And Piper?
No.
All right, very good. That concludes item four. Item five is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Box, before we approve the agenda, I believe we have a couple of items on item 8D, the sign exceptions that may end up getting tabled. Is that still accurate? Would you prefer we do that agenda or on the item?
That's correct. We can remove that from the agenda now.
Okay.
The sign portion.
And that we're requesting, and the petitioner is aware that we're looking at tabling those to our next scheduled meeting?
Correct.
Which would be August...I should know the date.
Say August 3rd.
August 5th.
August 5th. So, to the board and to the public, the petitioner and the township are looking to table the sign exceptions portions of 8D to our next regularly scheduled meeting, and I will entertain a motion to do that at this time.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Chairman?
A motion by Ms. Lawson. Is there support?
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by saying nay. We should probably have just approved the amended agenda, but we already tabled it, so now we're going to go on to item five, which is the approval of the agenda, which we just amended by tabling that item. Is there any motions on approval for the amended agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Lawson. Is there support?
I will second that.
Supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. All right, we are now on to the approval of the previous meeting minutes. These would be the minutes for our June meeting, the meeting of June 3rd. Is there any motions or discussion on this item?
Motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from June 3rd. Support?
A motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Lawson. All those in...
One quick thing that I noticed when I was looking at it.
Go ahead, Mr. Piper.
Real minor, but I think our meeting was at 7 o'clock, not 6:30.
And I would just, I would append it. I think it might have been at 6:30. If we could just have the staff...do you remember which it was?
I believe it was at 6:30. The last meeting, I believe, was the first one at 6:30, or no?
No, this was our first one.
We can confirm and update that in the minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I think what we'll do is we can make the motion...
It's minor.
No, we should have the record correct. We'll make the motion that if it was at 7 o'clock, that the minutes should be amended to reflect it. Who made the motion?
I did.
Would you be...okay, okay, very good. So, Ms. Lawson will amend her motion to that effect. Mr. Piper, do you still support it?
That's...actually, it was Kristi.
It was Ms. Posey, yes. Very good. On the motion to pass the minutes, with the understanding that the time will be changed to 7 o'clock, if accurate, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and the previous meeting minutes are approved. We are going to move now into old business. Before I get into old business, I do have one housekeeping item tonight, and that is that we are at four members. Because we have to make sure that any motions that are approved are voted on by at least three members, we could have a tied situation where a vote would fail because of the tie. Because of that, I will ask petitioners if they wish to table prior to us going to the motions, to make sure that they have the opportunity to do that. So, to the petitioners, just be aware, you do still require three votes to pass any motions this evening, and I'll give you the chance to table at such time if you choose to do so. That being said, we're on to item 7A, which is a request to vary from the zoning ordinance, section 10.1605.G. This is located at 2179023 Mile Road, a variety of permanent parcels that I'm not going to list all of, and Fadi Oscar is the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you give us the review and staff rundown on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this property, as you mentioned, is on the southwest corner of 23 and Card Road. They do have an approved site plan. Due to it being a commercial property, abutting residential property and masonry wall is required per township ordinance. As you can see here in the aerial, the property is a fair distance from the neighboring residential property. The closest house is roughly 270 feet from the property boundary, and most are well over 300 feet. It's over 400 feet from any residence to the closest proposed building. The petitioner is seeking a variance to deviate from the required masonry wall. As you see on the site plan here, the approved site plan, the wall is not on the property boundary, as is required per ordinance. That is due to the fact that the property boundary is a drain. Obviously, you cannot build a wall in the middle of a drain. So, the site plan that was approved shows a screen wall on the bank on the north side of the drain. What the petitioner is seeking to do is to create a screening wall with natural vegetation in lieu of a masonry wall. This is a bit of a rendering of what that might look like. Additionally, notice there, as well as the substantial distance from the residents and the buildings, there's also a large detention basin, which furthers the property from the residence. Again, another rendering of kind of what the proposed buildings would look like with no wall, with a vegetation wall, and with a masonry wall. All the vegetation wall and the masonry wall being very similar. The image at the bottom shown here, you can see existing vegetation actually exists in large amounts on the south side of the drain as well. So, in addition to the barrier that they're proposing to create as the buffer, there's an additional barrier on the south side of the drain. So, as far as the findings, they needed to satisfy the three items listed here. They must demonstrate that it's in compliance with the ordinance, and doing so would be unnecessarily burdensome. That practical difficulty is determined whether there's substantial relief would allow for more consistent justice, and that the request that they're asking for has no impact on public safety and welfare. And so, as we look at that, it would not, we feel as staff, it would not have any impact on public safety and welfare. So, we do feel that they've met that portion of the requirement. There are some difficulties in the maintenance of a wall being directly on a bank. You know, reaching the southern side of such a wall, you'd essentially be standing in a drain to do any, perform any maintenance on a wall. Allowing vegetation would allow a person to essentially walk through the vegetation to do any maintenance at the drain area if need be. That being said, I do think, which the petitioner is here tonight, I think they can maybe bolster their case as to what the hardship is here. I do want to point out here in the image, the subject property on the left there, north of the drain, if you see the property immediately across Card Road, there is a masonry wall, but as soon as it approaches the floodplain of the drain, the masonry wall was stopped there, which in this instance would be essentially the entire distance of the property. So, again, that's what they're seeking, is to have a vegetative buffer as opposed to a masonry wall.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any comments for Mr. Box before we move I just had one question, Mr. Box, and maybe I missed this. Maybe this is from our last time we saw this, and maybe I didn't catch it on the changeover. When did we get a change to a landscaping buffer? Is that something that happened in this one that I missed, or...
So, it was on the last agenda, which is why this is old business.
Mm-hmm.
And it was tabled. They were looking at some soil samples to possibly do a paneled wall that might work and have some easier maintenance. It appears that those soil samples didn't support that. So, in the process, they have decided to ask for the vegetative wall in lieu of the paneled wall. It is on the agenda as it was before, because that's how it was advertised.
And that, so we tabled it. Understood. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. I believe the petitioner is representative here. Sir, if you can state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Good evening. My name is Bill Thompson from Lanier Associates, 1700119 Mile Road, Clinton Township, 48038. Appreciate Mr. Box's work on this. What he says pretty much covers what I had. The one thing I'd like to add is, we submitted the engineering plans for review, and we actually got a letter back from the reviewing engineer earlier today. And he said that we needed to have additional calculations on whether the bank would be able to support a brick wall or a poured concrete wall. We had requested about two years ago to have the wall eliminated in lieu of landscaping, and that was turned down. But then we, and I didn't know this, but I understood that we, I understand that we can't submit basically the same request again, since it's been over a year. And what we've done is we've increased the buffer, we've densified the trees, and we're also pointing out that across the road, the other side of Card Road, they don't have a wall, they don't have landscaping. They were just asking for the same treatment that they got, but we're asking, but we're explaining that we will put in a buffering. And if you take a look at the slides that were up showing the three different versions, with no wall and with the trees and with a brick wall, the trees actually, when they're fully grown, will be between 12 and 15 feet high. A six-foot brick wall never grows. So, there won't be any benefit to that. We're seeking your consideration. We're willing to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So, in order to be in compliance with the ordinance, you have to indicate that it's unnecessarily burdensome. What is your argument for that?
Unnecessarily burdensome is we can't put the wall in the ditch. That's obvious. We put it up the top of the bank. Even the township engineer has indicated that we have to do extra work to support the fact that the wall will actually stay there. You know, you're putting a wall right in the top of a slope. The support for that wall has been diminished because there's no counterbalance to the dirt on one side. I know it's a one-on-four slope, and it appears like it should be okay, but we have to go out and prove that.
Mr. Box, if you may, obviously, the township engineer isn't here this evening. Can you support that our township engineer has indicated the same?
I do believe that he had asked for some evidence that it would support a wall. I don't, I don't know as far as whether that's been identified or not.
Has that evidence been provided to the township engineer?
It was mailed to him. I got it this morning. So, I assume he got it today, too.
So, he hasn't had the opportunity to review that yet?
Not that I know of.
So, if I could, Kristi, just jump in. Mr. Thompson, to your point, so you didn't get the request from the engineer this morning. You got the response to the soil sample analysis this morning.
No, I got this, I got the township engineer indicated that he wanted to have, by the township engineer, I don't mean Jim Van Tiflin. I mean Anderson Nexton and Westrick. They wanted to have more information to support the fact that a wall could be placed at the top of the slope.
And that was provided today?
No, it was not provided. I just got the notice today.
Gotcha. Okay.
I did have a question for you. You mentioned your original, in your original petition, you weren't referencing the soil samples. Obviously, I believe that you were referring to the hydrostatic pressure on a masonry wall.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, it sounds like the footing might be difficult, too, given what you're referring to. But I guess my question would be, what would stop you from putting drain tile through the footing? If it really is only an unusual flood event that would happen, I would think that you could put some type of drain tile through. It's on a slope. In theory, you could have it, you know, neutralize out. Is that something that's not practical? What would be the reason you wouldn't want to do that? Or am I not understanding where the pressure would be?
It's not that it's not practical. I think it would be counterproductive to dig a trench behind the wall, because the stability of the wall is based on the firmness of the ground beside it. If you dig a trench beside it, you destroy the soil. You're re-duing the soil.
Could you not do something like pea stone for an area next to it, so that it would still have support?
That's worse. No, that wouldn't work. That's, there's no consistency to pea stone. You need something solid, clay. Not even sand is a real good one.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Hearing none. I'm going to take it out to the audience. Mr. Thompson, I don't know how many people we have here for this. I think we only have one podium tonight, so yeah, if you might move aside. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, we could do so at this time. If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please specify what portion of the variance request you are stating or commenting on. I should also mention, if we have anyone in the public, I believe this is being streamed via Zoom, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine or hitting the hand button on the app, so that we can tell you on a comment, and we'll give you the chance to speak. Seeing no one in the audience tonight wishing to speak, I just asked Mr. Ivanowski, anyone in Zoom?
I'll see him.
All right, very good. With that being said, and without further...very good.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced the last name. Michaeli Powell? Go ahead, sir.
Hi. What is this in regards to? The retaining wall or the mire?
Hang on. This is, this is in regards to item 7A, which is the wall by the property at 23 and Card Road?
I have a hard time hearing.
Bob, can you relay that?
It's regarding the retaining wall on Card Road.
Okay, never mind then. Sorry.
All right. With that, and if there's no further, no further discussion or any concern, we will close the public portion for this item and bring it back to the board. Is there any further questions or comments on this issue?
I'm not really sure who I would direct this question to, but is it something that we might want to wait on having a vote, simply because we don't, we need more information on whether or not the wall could feasibly be put there, could not, I mean, have the engineering portion done? I don't know if that might be an option versus us voting on something that we might not be certain could work there.
We could. The only thing I would mention is that Mr. Thompson did present his request without this as a reason. So, I mean, I guess I would ask Mr. Thompson, would you like us to proceed based on your original request, or would you prefer us to wait until such time that you might have the reports back that engineering is looking at?
Are we talking about the landscaping versus a wall?
Yes, we are.
I don't know that there's any reason to delay landscaping versus a wall.
All right, very good. Mr. Thompson's indicated that he wishes to move forward, and so I would bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or motions.
I have a problem with the fact that the engineering department has concerns, and I, I'm sorry, I cannot vote in favor without knowing that they're signing off on this. I think that's a major thing that needs to be addressed.
Do you want to put that in form of a motion?
I would put that in a form of motion to reject based on that, and either that or to postpone it till, if he's willing to postpone it till such time as engineering agrees that, you know, that it's a practical difficulty. Because right now, I don't see the practical difficulty, and I need to find that in order to vote in favor of it.
Motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
Support.
Can we clarify what the motion is, please?
My motion would be that because the engineering department has not been able to say that there's a practical difficulty, because they need more information, that I would vote to reject.
Let's make sure we have the motion in support. Ms. Lawson's supporter, there's discussion. Mr. Alloia, question on this. If we vote to deny this, and Mr. Thompson gets an engineering change, or engineering drawings back, and the engineering drawings would support perhaps looking at this again, we still would have to wait for a year if we deny it tonight. Is that accurate?
That's correct, and the ZBA's decision is final. So, really, the question is whether you believe there's competent material or substantial evidence on the record to make a decision today. And if you don't believe that's the case, you have the discretion to vote to deny, or you have discretion to vote to table it, to postpone it till such time as that report is there.
Very good. And I would just say to the board that I would think that it might be more appropriate, and Mr. Box, you can weigh in if you feel you need to. But if, as a board, we think that we need to wait for that report, or that report might be, might cause us to give the variance, I think it would behoove us to, at minimum, table it, so that we don't...
Be willing to amend the, my motion to table.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, have him make a motion to postpone.
Yeah, Mr. Piper, if you could, modify it to postpone until our next regularly scheduled meeting, or until such time that Mr. Thompson was able to get the report back. Is it AEW? Or Anderson?
We'd have to hire a separate engineer.
Okay.
At Geotech.
Okay. I would think it would be till such time when that report was brought back and the township was able to review it.
I, okay, I will make my, amend my motion then to table it or postpone it to such time as the AEW or township engineer can come back with a report to support the...
All right. Motion by Mr. Piper. Ms. Lawson's going to support. Josh, before we go any further, are you okay with this? Is this running along?
Yeah, I was...
As far as the process on it?
A little confused at first. I guess my understanding, what Mr. Thompson was saying is that AEW was asking for, I guess, proof that the bank could even hold the wall.
That was my understanding as well.
Which, what they're trying to ask for is to not have the wall anyways, not whether or not the bank could support it. So, it is possible that they could say the bank will support a wall, but it's also possible they could say that the bank will not support...
Will not support a wall, in which case I think it would give us, and to Mr. Thompson, I assume you're following along, I think that that would give us a pretty clear answer. I guess I think I might be more similar to you. I think that the review by the engineering department would mean it's more likely he couldn't put the wall in unless, but I would...
For them to request that now, I'm not sure that AEW and their work on this project were even aware that they were asking for a variance. It would seem that they were out there looking at the site and are wondering, with this approved site plan, as they go through the engineering process, they see approved site plan showing a wall. They're wondering whether it can even hold the wall.
Whether it can be held. I have a question, but it's not to the motion, so I guess I will leave it at the moment.
Let's, Chairman, just let's be clear. I think the point that he made was, is that the township would review his report as to whether the petitioner has to come up with the report. The township engineer would review that on that and comment into whether they agree or disagree.
I'm not sure I followed you.
So, the township engineer, AEW is our consultant, right, is a consultant for the township, requested the petitioner to provide some sort of report to show whether it could support a wall or not.
Correct.
Okay. That is a report that would be generated. Our township engineer would review that.
Correct.
And comment.
Correct.
So, our township engineer is not producing a report as to that.
That is a good clarification. Yes, it would be Mr. Thompson's engineer or Mr. Thompson's company who would, who would generate the report, and then it would be, it would come to our engineer, who would then verify if it was, if it was accurate. Okay. Yeah, I would just comment before we have the motion. I think we might have enough here regardless to vote on it, and I find myself in favor of it at the moment. But the motion is made and is on the floor, and so I think we'll proceed with a vote for it. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I will start with Member Piper.
Yes.
Member Lawson, yes. Member Tuckfield?
No.
And Member Posey?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Mr. Thompson, we will see you at the next meeting, hopefully. Thank you. All right, that moves us on from old business to new business. This next item is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10-0311 EF2 and 10-0311 EF3. This is for 49513 Buffalo Head Drive, permanent parcel 0820326023. Michael and Christina Galecki, hopefully I didn't ruin that name too much. Very good. I always worry about that when I say them. And Mr. Box, could you please take us through this review and the township's findings?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buffalo Head Lane, I'm not sure if it's Buffalo Head Lane or Buffalo Head Drive. I'm seeing two different versions of it here. Buffalo Head Lane, okay. Located on the north side of 22, west of Romeo Plank. They are in the Walnut Creek subdivision, and they are seeking to place a pool in a location that would require a couple of variances from our standard ordinance, that being the setback from the rear property line, as well as a portion of the pool being in a side yard, which is also not allowed. It is a bit of an oddly shaped property as it narrows towards the front. Additionally, they do have a couple of different easements that they're dealing with on the southern property line, as well as the east, western property line, which is the rear yard there, the 20-foot easement that you see here. In order to meet the setback, the 20-foot setback from the rear line, they would essentially be about five feet from the house, which would also then require a variance as well, again, due to the odd shape of the property itself. You can see here the layout of what they're proposing. They are looking to put the pool roughly 14 feet from the rear line, which would be six feet into that rear easement. The second variance being in the side yard, this is to minimalize the encroachment into that rear easement. And this layout, actually, we worked with the water and sewer department to make sure it was in a location that best suited their needs, where this variance to be granted, and they were pleased to have the minimal impacts into their easements.
All right.
At this time, I think all internal departments can agree with the need for this variance. We do call out here, as you see, that they do show in this plan, a little bit of landscaping in the side yard easement, which they will have to remove when they actually remove from their plans. I don't believe that's existing, but there can be no vegetation in that water easement there. But with regards to the pool placement, all departments are in favor of this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. If the applicants, I believe the applicants are in the audience tonight, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Good evening, everybody. My wife Christina, Michael Galecki, 49513 Buffalo Head Lane. We appreciate your guys' consideration tonight. With our yard being irregular shaped, it makes it difficult, and also the easements, as Josh already stated. It's basically the main area that we're, why we want to have the pool, due to those three things, the irregular shape of the yard and the two easements.
Very good. Any questions for the petitioner from the board? Hearing none for the moment. We're going to take this out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address. If anyone online wishes to speak on this item, this would be item 8A, which is a pool variance, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine on your phone or the hand button on your app. Anyone on this item? Seeing no one in the public audience, Mr. Ivanowski, do we have anyone online at the moment?
Not currently, Mr. Tuckfield.
Okay, very good. With that said, and without any further discussion, I will close the public portion and bring it back to the board. Is there any further questions, comments, or motions on this item?
I just have one question for Josh. You said that all of the boards were willing to approve it or were in agreement with it. In part of the paperwork, I saw that it said that the approval should be granted... Um, and part of the paperwork I saw that it said, um, that the approval should be granted, um, if they get an easement, um, encroachment from water and sewer. So we would want to, if we were to approve it, we would, you know, for the pavement in the rear yard, we're going to want to include that in the motion, correct?
Correct. They would need an, an easement encroachment agreement with water and sewer. And, and they are aware of this variance request, and, and as I said before, they actually helped, this, they initial, their initial request for where to locate the pool was, was different, and actually impacted more of the other easement. Uh, and it was water and sewer who suggested we slide it, uh, in this direction because it was less impactful for their purposes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the variance due to the irregular shape of the property and the wide easements contingent upon approval of the water and sewer department on the easement encroachment.
And Ms. Posey, that would be for both, uh, variance one and two?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Lawson. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call it to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed by saying nay. Uh, that item passes. Uh, the variances are approved. Thank you for coming in tonight, and I hope it all goes well for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to item eight B. Uh, this is a variance request from the zoning ordinance ten point zero three one one B. Uh, this is with regards to permanent parcel zero eight two two four seven six zero zero six. Uh, Trevor Berbreck is the, hopefully that name's correct too, uh, is the petitioner in this case. Um, Mr. Box, could you take us through the, uh, staff findings in this case?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, property is located north of twenty-two mile, west of Card Road. As you can see here, and, and the, the plot plan here as well, uh, we have another oddly shaped lot. Um, this is not all that uncommon, uh, with some lots on cul-de-sacs or on, on eyebrows as that last house was. Due to the, the fact that it's odd shaped, um, that the front yard often extends what normally would be a side yard, which has much further setback, uh, requirements, which is the situation here. They are required twenty-five feet from their front yard, uh, but most people would look at this as a side yard, but it's still, uh, in front of the house, so technically this is, is their front yard. Uh, they are looking to have an expansion, uh, that would, uh, come within fifteen feet, fifteen point one three feet of what is their front yard, uh, when twenty-five feet is required. So they are seeking that variance. I will defer to the petitioner. I'm not sure if they're here. I believe this is an expansion to their primary bedroom, uh, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But at this time, all of our internal departments have, have looked at this and are, uh, in favor of approval of this variance.
Very good. Is the petitioner in the audience tonight?
Uh, he's available, Mr. Chairman.
I am.
Hello, sir. Uh, can you state your name and address for the record? And if, assuming that you could hear what Josh just stated, if you could state any further comments you might have in this issue?
Unfortunately, I didn't hear what Josh was saying. It was just a, a little, little quiet. Um, if you'd like to relay that to me, I'd happily comment.
Um, I would, uh, summarize the staff findings to say that, uh, it's an irregularly shaped lot, uh, that you would be putting in addition into what would normally appear to be the side yard, but in this case, it's the front yard. Um, and that, uh, he believed it was an extension of the main bedroom. Um, and Mr. Box, uh, just to make sure I don't misquote you, what was the, what was the staff findings on this? As far as, as far as, uh, which way you felt we should go?
Uh, staff was in support of this variance.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, I remember. And, and sir, staff, uh, was recommending support of this variance.
Beautiful. So, yes, the, uh, the expansion is technically off the side of the house. Uh, we won't be coming any further forward than any, um, existing piece of the property as is.
Okay, very good. Did you have any, any other comments? The next step that we'll make, and I'm not sure how we've, how well you've been able to follow along. I know our audio is, uh, somewhat quiet, um, for those on Zoom this evening. Um, I'll be taking it out to the public next, uh, after this, if, if the board doesn't have any comments. And then I'll be bringing it back to the board, and we may have some questions for you at that point. Are, are you following along?
Yep, very well.
Okay, very good. Um, and actually, before we go to the public, is, do the members of the board have any questions from Mr. Box or the petitioner? Hearing none, I'm going to take it out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this request? If you do, in your, in how, or in, uh, the building tonight, please come to the front, uh, state your name and address for the record, um, and give any comments you might have. If you are online, please hit star nine on your phone, or the hand button on your app. It does not appear that anyone in person wishes to comment. Mr. Ivanowski, anyone online?
Nobody online, sir.
Okay, very good. I'm going to bring it back to the board then. Uh, and does anyone have any questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe that, uh, I would make a motion to approve this variance because of the odd shape of the lot. That is definitely a practical difficulty for the homeowner.
Very good.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Uh, Piper, support by Ms. Lawson. Uh, just brief discussion here. I would add that I've been in that subdivision a couple of times before, and I'm not sure that I've seen the front of the house so clearly, um, sliced off by the lot. Uh, it made me think I, I need to watch those cul-de-sacs a little bit more on the buildable areas when we're looking at them at the planning commission. So I definitely am supportive of this, and this is a pretty classic, uh, pretty classic plat, practical difficulty in the lot. That being said, if there's no further discussion, I will call the vote. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. Uh, that item carries. That motion is approved. Thank you, sir, for coming in. I hope the addition goes well for you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your holiday.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us on to eight C. This is a variance, uh, request from the zoning ordinance. Actually, I believe technically it is a sign exception, just to make sure that I don't, uh, misspeak there. Uh, this would be from section two zero dash six point eight point one. Uh, this was with regards to permanent parcel zero eight one eight three two six zero zero two. Uh, Lawrence Warden is the petitioner. Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Box is going to take us through this one, or Mr. Skurdo. I think this is Mr. Skurdo. So, Mr. Skurdo, if you could, uh, run us through this, um, and, and, uh, just if you could, I'm sure you will. Please, I know this is a little bit of a different rhythm than we're normally with, because it's an exception and a variance. Please give us some of the background on.
Sure.
What our, uh, what our lane is here tonight.
Uh, sure. The applicant actually appeared for the same request, uh, last year. He actually signed the, uh, petition was done quite a while ago, early two thousand, two, twenty twenty. And at that point, uh, the applicant, uh, filled out a, application for a variance. He got processes of variance. Based on, after the last decision to deny that variance, we checked the ordinance again and find out technically he should have applied for a sign exception. The difference, the primary difference between a sign variance and a sign exception is a variance require, requires a practical difficulty that could not be demonstrated the last time. Sign exception does not require the, uh, use of a practical difficulty in terms of your decision. Um, what a sign exception asks the ZBA members to look at are any obstructions, uh, visibility issues, any disturbance to site features, uh, the scale of the request, uh, in, um, proportion to the surrounding area, the aesthetics of the request. Um, is the request the minimal standard, or the minimal request? And they go smaller? Or do they have to, have the request that they, they're asking for, and whether the intent of the chapter is met? Um, we went through, staff went through, um, the requirements. As of right now, uh, we didn't see any need to, um, recommend approval based on the one condition on the minimal necessary. Right now, the applicant's still asking for full size, which you find at the front of a building. This is the side of the building. Uh, staff recognizes that there are some visibility issues from twenty-three mile road. Uh, the applicant has also stated that he would move the sign to the front of the building if the development ever got, but the, um, development happened next door to him, to the, uh, south. Um, at this point, we could not recommend approval, but we do leave the door open for the applicant to prove that this is the minimal necessary. We understand the need for the signage, but can he go smaller than what he's requesting? And we leave that to the ZBA members to, you know, pose that question to the applicant.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Skurdo. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Skurdo before we move on? And I should note for the record, I don't think we did this at the beginning, um, but Mr. Skurdo is our planning consultant. Mr. Box is our, uh, planning director, and Mr. Loya is our legal counsel. I usually do that at the beginning of the meeting, and I realized I didn't identify you. My apologies. Um, with that being said, Mr. Ivanowski, I believe the petitioner is on Zoom on this one as well. Um, it would be, um. Yeah, Mr. Zakarsky, yeah. Uh, Mr. Ward might be on there as well. Kevin, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Uh, were you able to hear Mr. Skurdo's review?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Very good. If, if you could, sir, uh, just, you know, identify yourself, uh, for the record and, and give any additional comments you had. And just in case it was not, um, not fully coming through, uh, Mr. Skurdo did indicate that, uh, the staff was not currently recommending this, uh, exception due to the fact that staff did not feel that it was proven that this was the minimal required sign, and he indicated that might be something that you wanted to address, uh, during your comments.
Uh, again, I'm Kevin Zakarsky. I'm the owner of Sunny's Pools More, and, uh, at this building. My address is five four four seven zero Salem, Shelby Township. I did hear everything he said, and I under, I, I believe I understand everything he, that he explained to you folks.
Would you have any, would you have any additional comments on whether or not this sign is the minimal?
Did you catch all that?
Uh, yes, we caught all that.
I'm sorry, I don't hear you.
Uh, can you hear us?
I cannot, I can't hear you right now. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you, Mr. Zakarsky. If, if, uh, you can hear us, we can certainly hear you.
I can hear you now.
Okay, um, uh, so you were able to hear Mr. Skurdo, um, and, uh.
Yes, sir.
He was indicating that, uh, staff was not currently recommending this item, uh, because they did not feel it had been proven that, uh, this was the minimal required sign for this location, and he indicated that might be something that you'd like to comment on.
Again, going in and out to hear all your words, um, I just think it'd be, it'd just be good for the business and the building, and because of the property that hasn't been developed south of it, with all the growth, it'd be good for safety, security, and visibility.
Uh, I'm just gonna, I'll repeat the one question one more time, because I think it's pertinent to.
I don't hear you again.
I think it's pertinent to the question, so, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask it, and then, uh, if you're not able to hear us, I think we'll, we'll move on. Um, uh, we're, we're looking to see if you can give any reasoning for, if this is the minimal acceptable sign for this area. Can you go smaller than you're proposing?
Well, it, it just made the best sense to fit and finish what it could see from the distance from twenty-three mile road and the speed zone, so, um, and we didn't want to put a sign in the front of the building, so we were just hoping to use all that space in the, on the, from the front to the side. And again, if they do build a building next to us, we would take that sign down.
All right, any questions for the petitioner from the board? Uh, hopefully he'd be able to hear us if we ask.
I'm trying to go from my memory from the last time this came before, so it seemed to me that the reason he wanted to put that sign on the side was, was already an existing sign from a previous location. I think that's what he was trying to do.
I believe that's what was originally indicated, yes. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to take it out to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Again, this is the, uh, sign exception for Sunny's Pools off of twenty-three, uh, and east of Hayes. Uh, if anyone in the pu, uh, public on Zoom wishes to speak, please hit star nine on your phone, or hit the hand button on the app to indicate that you'd like to speak. See, no one in the audience. Mr. Ivanowski, anyone online?
Most are not at the moment.
Uh, with that, we're going to close, uh, the public portion and bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions or motions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state that I don't feel the petitioner, um, provided us with, um, or demonstrated that the requested exception is the minimum necessary to allow for the reusable use of the sign. It sounded like it was just more of convenience. Um, unfortunately, that doesn't put us in a position to vote in favor of relocating that sign to the side of the building, in my opinion.
Uh, very good. Ms. Ms. Posey, any other questions, comments, or motions? I, I, uh, Mr. Piper, do you have one?
No, I was just gonna say, if you need that in form of a motion, that was my exact feeling on.
I, I did have a question for, for Mr. Uh, for Mr. Skurdo. Uh, you know, we've heard a couple of different things on this particular item. I believe initially, the applicant said that this was an existing sign. I believe at our last meeting, he indicated it might be a new sign, so I'm not entirely sure if it's new or existing. But setting that aside, um, you indicated you didn't feel that this met the need for the minimum acceptable sign. Does staff have a, have a number that they believe is the minimal acceptable?
Uh, no, we were hoping that the applicant would have something. They have the sign experts and the sign designers. Township doesn't have that capability. We were hoping that the applicant would come forward with some type of recommendation. Why, or why, or why not?
Understood. Mr. Zakarsky, can you hear us?
And again, uh, since we keep going in and out of this, I'm having more of the conversation. This be through the summertime and all the people zooming, it'd be helpful to another meeting, so that our sign person can be involved too, so he can give you some more of this information.
You're breaking up, but are you indicating that you'd like tables to make sure your sign professional is involved in the conversation?
I think that's, I think you said table it in the next meeting? Uh, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Maybe we just do sign language. Because I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Um, with that being said, and also because of our technical difficulties, I think I would recommend that we postpone this to a future meeting. And Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo, if you could recommend to Mr. Zakarsky that he might be better off coming in for this item, um, and making sure that all required, uh, individuals are present. Sir, I, I think I, I think I know what you want to say. I, I think we're okay. Um, I think we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving. Mr. Box, Mr. Skurdo, are you okay with us doing that?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Zakarsky, are you able to hear us?
I hear you at the moment, yes. I heard, just asked Mr. Skurdo a question. So table it to the next meeting?
Yes, and then we would request that you would.
Okay, that's fine with me.
And we would request you attend in person with any, any members of your staff or consultants that are necessary for us to determine if we should approve.
And I can't hear you no more, so if you wave by, I know that's tabled the next meeting.
Mr. Tuckfield.
I'll wave. I'm, I'm, I'm doing the right sign language here.
If I could add.
Go ahead, Mr. Box.
This, uh, this will be the last ZBA meeting that we're utilizing Zoom, so he would have to attend in person.
Very good. All right. Which will be good, as, as we can see here, it's not a perfect medium. All right, with that, I, I would entertain a motion to table, and specifically, we're not getting good connection with the, with the petitioner. I don't feel comfortable, um, making a motion yea or nay on this, uh, not being able to fully understand what he's saying.
Well, we'll make that motion, table it to the next meeting.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Piper, supported by Ms. Lawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Mr. Zakarsky, we will see you in a month. I'll wave, and we'll go on to our next, uh, next item. All right, um, our next item is a request to vary from the zoning ordinance, section ten point zero three two three point C, point five, point C, also section ten point one six zero five, point B, point two. Uh, we postponed, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, the sign exception, so that one will not be, uh, will not be heard tonight. Uh, the permanent parcel number here is zero eight zero seven three zero 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 one six. Meyer Inc. is the petitioner. Uh, Mr. Box, could you take us through, um, both the, uh, the requests here? And just make sure, if you could, clarify where we are in the process with this particular, uh, property and what we're looking at this evening?
Yeah, so, uh, I guess to, to start, uh, the township is aware that there are many concerned citizens and residents uh, with this development, uh, evidenced by how many people are here, and none of them have been here for any of the other items. So obviously, this is the item they're here for. Uh, we've had a lot of phone calls, a lot of, uh, residents showing up here at Town Hall. Um, and, and though, when we explain the process and explain what's being proposed, I think most of them, uh, leave feeling much more comfortable about, uh, the process and the development before them, uh, there are still concerns. Uh, and the, the majority of the concerns we hear are items that should be addressed at the planning commission level, uh, not necessarily here at the ZBA. This, uh, potential development is on the agenda for the July twentieth Planning Commission meeting. Uh, issues, you know, brought here to the ZBA are very narrow in scope, as we've seen tonight, uh, you know, setback requirements, um, height restrictions, those type of items are, are very narrow in scope. Uh, and, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Um, you know, we, we're here to discuss the fact that, uh, they want a, a height variance and, and a parking variance. Um, it's not a rezoning request. It's already commercially zoned property C two, uh, where grocery stores are allowed. grocery stores are allowed. This is not the site plan that will take place on July twentieth, so we're, so we're not really here tonight to talk about traffic, noise, health concerns, or anything other than the two variances, you know, being requested tonight. I, I understand that's largely probably what these folks want to discuss. This board doesn't really decide how the property is to be used, or if this is a good or bad fit for the township. That's up to the owner of the property and their broker. They're the ones that brought this to the township and presented it to us, and we're going through that process accordingly. The ZBA does have some statutory responsibility with, with their actions and guidelines, you know, what they have to follow. Straying from, from that could definitely have some consequences. I don't know if Mr. Aloya would like to weigh in on, on some of that.
Well, I think when you go through, Mr. Box will go through his report, he'll go through the different factors for, that you need to consider for variance, and those are the fact, only factors that you can really consider. As Mr. Box pointed out, this is not a rezoning hearing to determine whether a grocery store is appropriate there because it's already an appropriate zoning. The question is, before you, the two variances. So, to do so, if this board were to consider factors that are outside of its discretion or consideration, that could, that could be viewed as an abuse of discretion if the applicant were to appeal. So, just keep that in mind. I'd be happy to answer any questions in the course of this about the procedure.
Very good. And more practically, if I could make sure I clarify, it might be, in addition to being viewed, it might actually be straying outside our responsibility.
Well, that's for a judge to decide, so.
Very good. All right, Mr. Box, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as everyone is aware, there's a Meyer grocery store potentially planned for the corner of twenty-four mile road and Hayes Road within the township, and they are here this evening seeking two variances. These are for parking space requirements and the height of the building. The, the required parking at this time would be four hundred and fifty spaces. They are seeking to have four hundred spaces, and the height of the building right now is limited to twenty-five feet, and in a small portion of the building, they are seeking thirty-six feet two-inch piece of the, the property. The site does have, has had several plans over the past years, but it does remain undeveloped at this time. The site has some very large easements on the north and the east, as well as some wetlands on the south along twenty-four mile road, and it does have visibility issues, largely due to the, the bank and the school that front on Hayes Road. The proposed site was oriented to have minimal impacts on the surrounding properties. There are large distances from the building to the property line, much larger than, than what is actually required by ordinance. With regards to the, the parking request, the four hundred and fifty spaces required and, and seeking down to four hundred spaces, the four hundred spaces account for, for some areas that you saw on the previous slide, where they, they're proposing some online pickups. That, that is definitely something that is a fast-growing trend, I think, with grocery stores, and, and this, this grocery store would not be any different. Folks are often now ordering online and, and driving to the store, picking them up, and as this is becoming a, a new trend, I think a lot of ordinances are not really prepared for that. Their parking standards are still based on something from the past, so this is definitely something we would want to look at with regards to what the ordinance says in the future, but for this case, that, this, the ordinance as written, they would be required four hundred and fifty spaces, and they are seeking four hundred. They are additionally proposing, as you saw on the last slide, I guess I can go back and, and put that up there again, a number of landscaped islands. Those are not required, but they do make the, the movement throughout the parking lot much safer, both for vehicles, as it, it keeps them kind of contained and in a circular pattern throughout the parking lot, as well as for pedestrians. It gives them kind of that safe haven as they're about to cross an aisle or, or a drive lane in front of the store. And again, those are not required. That's something they're proposing for safety. They're also keeping the building further away from both the north and the eastern side residential populations, so there is room, you know, to, sure, they could probably slide the building over and add more parking in there, but that impact would, would be detrimental to those who live in the area. And so, the, the parking spaces are, are something that they're, they're viewing as a safety, as well as being that good neighbor and, and staying as far away as, as the site would allow from the neighbors. With regards to the height, the, the building itself is largely twenty-two feet six inches tall, which is well under the, the required twenty-five feet maximum. They do have a small area that is a parapet wall that takes it up another eighteen inches. That is, or, I'm sorry, takes it about eighteen inches over the required twenty-five feet. That is allowed by ordinance. We are allowed up to a three-foot parapet wall beyond the twenty-five feet to screen from rooftop, you know, air conditioning units or other utilities that may be on the roof. The, the part that you see here outlined in yellow is, is really the area in question, the thirty-six point two feet. It's very centrally located on the property. Again, this was designed to have the least impact as possible on the surrounding area, but they do have some outlots on Hayes Road that would, that would cause some sightline problems from them being visible out there, and, and that is largely why they're asking for this, this taller structure. Generally, I think staff is comfortable with both of these variance requests, allowing the, the parking spaces. I think the hardship is, is that they're trading off safety and, and they're trading off what could impact neighbors by shifting the building over, as well as the height, the visibility issues. There are a number of locations around the township that have received variances for, for taller structures. You know, the Imagine just down the street has a significantly larger structure, and again, it's, it's a visibility thing. There are outlots in front of them.
Very good. Is that, that, Mr. Box?
Yes.
All right, very good. Any questions from the board to Mr. Box?
I have one question. You talked about possibly the township looking at their parking ordinance and, you know, making changes to it. Is it something that this petitioner, let's say we were not to grant the variance and then the ordinance changes, then would they be able to then have less parking, you know, with the new variance then, or, I'm sorry, the new ordinance, would that then take precedence, or would they be stuck with what ever ruling the board came up with?
So at the time of, of their plans being approved, they would have to follow the ordinance. Right now, they're required four hundred and fifty.
Right.
The, the new parking requirements that we may dive into, that's several months out from here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one quick question. I'm just trying to visualize the, the higher part of the building where the Meyer sign would be. Was that facing twenty-four? Is that facing Hayes? Is it kind of facing the intersection of twenty-four and Hayes?
So if you see, I, I went back a few slides, so you could kind of see the layout. That is, is, if you can see my cursor up here, right here, about as center as they could make it in the lot, and I, I think a lot of that has to do with trying to get the visibility between the two existing structures here, as well as getting visibility down here, and, and keeping the building as far away, you know, they could easily slide this building over. You see the extra space. The, the sign of sightline here from these houses, I think the twenty-two and a half feet that the back of the building is, I don't think these houses would even see that structure from back there. And in fact, a lot of those houses, the, the height requirement for residential in those areas is also twenty-five feet, and that's measured at the midway point between the, the pitch and, and their, their troughs, so many of those houses are actually taller than what this building will be.
Any other questions for Mr. Box? Hearing none, we're gonna take it to the petitioner. I believe the petitioner is in the audience. If you could stand, give your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Jason Vander Cody. I'm a civil engineer with Fishback, and we are representing Meyer this evening.
If, ma'am, well, I'll, I'll make sure we keep volume, but if you could just leave the comments for the moment. If you can make sure you, you raise the microphone and speak into it as much as you can. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Is this better? Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Jason Vander Cody. I'm a civil engineer with Fishback, and we are representing Meyer with this request, as well as the development of the site, and with me tonight, I have Mr. Chris Jones from Meyer.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, Board of Zoning Appeals, staff, and citizens. I'm Chris Jones. I'm real estate manager for Meyer, and based in Grand Rapids. I'm at twenty-three fifty Three Mile Road, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Thank you.
I will discuss the parking variance request first, if that's okay, and then the height variance second. If at any time you have questions with something I say, please feel free to interrupt me. I have prepared notes that I'm gonna read through, so I won't necessarily be looking at your eyes the whole time, but just chime in, and I'll stop and address whatever questions you have. With relation to the parking request, the practical difficulty that we have on this site is based on several existing site conditions that provide a practical difficulty to us in providing the four hundred and fifty parking spaces required. But before I talk about those, I just want to mention that the four hundred and fifty parking space count is based on a five parking space per thousand square foot of building requirement, and that assumes that the entire building is going to be used for the dedicated purpose. In this case, the Meyer store that we are prepared to propose to the township, should, should the variance be granted, is going to simply be a Meyer grocery store, and that means that we're going to have very, very limited general merchandise. A majority of it is going to be grocery only. With that, we have two drive-through operations as well. One of them is going to be a pharmacy drive-up, and, and the image is depicted in the lower right-hand side of the store, and the other to drive-up area is going to be on the, on the top of the store, and that is going to be a new online order pickup area, whereas Mr. Box represented, folks can order online, drive-back, a team member can come out and bring them their order, and then they can drive home again without having to come into the building. So with those two operations, the need for additional onsite parking for people to come into and out of our building doesn't really reflect the five per thousand in the ordinance. Yes, sir?
I do have one question with that.
Absolutely.
What are you anticipating the stacking is on that, on that grocery pickup area and then potentially on the pharmacy?
So on the pharmacy, there's a minimum stacking requirement according to your ordinance of four vehicles, I believe, Josh, and I believe we have five shown on our site plan right now, so we're exceeding the ordinance by one at that location. The ordinance is silent on online order pickup because it's a fairly new phenomenon, so with that, we have eight parking spaces for online orders waiting. When you pull into those parking spaces, there will be a sign in front. You'll dial the number, somebody will come out and bring the groceries to you. The stacking behind that, I believe that cone is seven or eight, but I'm gonna have to verify that before I promise it.
So, so to the total count you have here of four hundred, the stacking is probably not included-
The stacking is not included.
Generally considered stacking, not parking.
Yes, sir.
The angled parking spots are included.
That's correct. Those spots are included, and they do have the adequate width required.
Okay, and then to Mr., I'm sorry, I believe it was Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yeah, to Mr. Jones, what are, times are odd right now, so it's, it's difficult to discuss what normal is, because I don't think we know what normal is yet. But what are you seeing is typical stacking in this type of location?
This is a larger area than we have installed in the past. When the pandemic hit last March, we only had a, you know, a handful of stores that offered this service, and since the pandemic, Meyer has two hundred and fifty-nine stores. We rolled out customer pickup and online ordering to all, to our entire chain. The, it was only being tested prior to the pandemic, so we've been, we, we rolled it out extremely quickly and fast because we were getting, you know, sometimes a hundred to two hundred percent increase in use of it, as people wanted to social distance and that type of thing. So this is a evolved version of, of customer pickup, and so it provides the island as new that you can see with the purple flowers or purple trees in there, and the island that's kind of a canoe-shaped island, you know, directly to the right of it. Those are, that's a new element for the curbside pickup, and the angled spaces is slightly different than what we rolled out two hundred, two hundred and sixty stores. So I hope that answers your question. I think, I would say to you that there is very few stacking locations in our chain right now, because we just designated five or six spaces as close to a door as we could, and designated the area inside the building to where we could add some coolers and add some frozen food areas, so we could stage the groceries until the person pulled up in a, pulled up in their car and text us, and we could walk that merchandise out to them, because you have different temperatures of food that you have to keep food stored at. I hope that answers your question.
I might, I might narrow it down just a little bit, because I'm not sure I quite heard or quite got what I was looking at. So, what I'm looking at is, we're looking through here for a reduction of parking spaces.
Correct.
And what you're indicating to us is that the typical use for the store is changing.
Absolutely.
So what I'm looking at is where are other cars going to go? What I'm hearing is, to some extent, those are going to go into the stacking for the service.
Absolutely correct.
I'm trying to understand the percentage, so another question might be, what's a typical time slot? How many cars are typically in a time slot?
Three minutes.
I would say how many people would generally be in a time slot at a time?
Oh, well, so it, the maximum that's, we're providing for is eight in a parking spot and eight stacked, and eight stacked.
That was, that was what I-
But that, you don't see that, you don't see that location full very often, because people, because their stay in that spot is like a three-minute time, time stay, so you're, you're constantly cycling the people through the customer pickup.
Potentially a more efficient use of the same number of spots with-
Absolutely. Our typical, you know, in a, in a supercenter, it take, our typical shopper is in the store about forty-five minutes. Here, and we have, this store is half the size of a supercenter, so, you know, there're gonna be a little, probably it's gonna be half the, a duration of time that they're in the store, so you're cycling those spaces much faster. Same is true for the pharmacy drive-through.
Very good. That answers my question. Thank you. Please proceed, and thanks, thanks for my interruption, all my interruption there.
Yes, absolutely, and I can add one, one other item to that, just from personal experience, is that when you schedule your time for the groceries online, those time slots are limited, and so it's not the case where we can have eighteen people show up at once because the online order system doesn't accommodate that, and so we're able to self, self-manage where those queuing spaces don't spill out onto the roadway, or onto the drive aisle for the shipping-receiving area.
Very good, and just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not as concerned about that, just because I think to Mr. Box, Mr. Aloya's point, that may stray somewhat out of our, I'm more concerned just particularly how many parking spots we are substituting, so to speak, there for a different type of parking use.
Just to further, just to add on to Jason, the drive aisles, you see two drive aisles around the island. I mean, that could be parking, you, you know, so the, the drive aisles take up a couple, you know, those are probably eighteen-foot drive aisles, so you have two of those that, basically, that north section of our parking lot conceivably could be parking spaces, but instead, it's two drive aisles and a customer pickup. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Yes, please, please continue. Thank you.
Okay, so because of the pharmacy operation and the online order operation, the need for us to have four hundred and fifty spaces at this location doesn't, doesn't really serve us well, and so because of that, we're trying to design the site to accommodate our needs as well as the community's needs within the conditions on site, and that's, that's what I'm going to present to you right now. So this existing site, as Josh mentioned, has a sixty-six-foot wide high-pressure gas easement along the east side of the site, and I think, Josh, that was two or three slides earlier, if you can, thank you. That's the large white bar on the right. That's a twenty-six-inch diameter, probably neighborhood four hundred PSI gas main. Consumers Energy holds rights to that sixty-six feet, and we are, in order for us to do anything in that, we need to secure written permission from consumers with justification, which is not easy to come by. Adjacent to that easement on the left is a thirty-foot sanitary sewer easement, which does have an existing sanitary sewer in it, serving the community to the north of our site, so for us to put a building at that location would be problematic as well. On the north side, you can see there's also a sanitary sewer- On the north side, you can see there's also a sanitary sewer easement, which serves the Goddard School, as well as a green belt between that easement and the neighborhood to the north. We do have a neighborhood to the north and a neighborhood to the east that we're going to work hard to be good neighbors with, as well as we have some wetlands on the south that we are working to protect to the greatest extent possible for the state of Michigan. Finally, you'll see it's a wide-open site, and there's very little landscaping, if any, for us to preserve and protect. So those are the existing site constraints that we are working at within to design this site and to provide adequate parking for our proposed use. Increasing the number of parking spaces from 400 to 450 will require us to increase the impact on any or all of these items. So restating that in layman's terms is, in order for us to provide parking for the front entry of the store for our customers, that building is going to have to move to the east or to the north, and the parking lot is going to have to grow to the south. So in any event that we move that building or grow that parking lot, we're necessarily going to be encroaching in the gas main, the sanitary sewer easement, the other sanitary sewer easement. We're going to increase the impact to the wetlands on the south, or we're going to significantly reduce the buffering between ourselves and our neighbors, or we're going to have to reduce the islands for the parking lot, which help to provide safety for our customers. And as they maneuver into and out of a parking lot, so they have dedicated drive aisles around the perimeter and dedicated aisleways to drive back and forth in. And what that does is it allows you a limited number of intersections or decision points where customers expect other customers to be driving. When you remove those islands, then it's a free-for-all, and it becomes much more dangerous. So should the ZBA tell us that we are required to have 450 spaces, our site, in our opinion, is going to become less safe than the way that we designed it. And then finally, the removal of those islands will also cause the removal of those trees. And that, in our opinion, will be less attractive to the township and provide less green space and more impervious area generating stormwater runoff. So just some tuck-nuckle items there at the end that are going to be impacted as well. Do you have any questions on that? That's a lot to throw at you.
Anyone else important have questions? I do have one question. I'm not sure this is going to be appropriate. So Josh or Ben, stop me if I need to not move forward. I'm not seeing any water handling on the site. Is that being handled differently, or how is that working?
Great question. You're referring to stormwater management, I assume? Okay. So this particular site is part of the county drain system. And as it was approved as, I believe, Gateway Village, was approved for a direct connection. There is a 36-inch storm sewer pipe at the northeast corner of the property that the Gateway Village was approved to connect to. And in speaking with Mr. Vintiflin, Meyer has received the same connection privileges. And so it's going to be underground connection to that 36-inch pipe, which exists. That pipe currently serves the Goddard School as well as the Comerica Bank. And so that site drainage is currently routing through that pipe via surface flow. We're just going to modify how that works in order to accommodate the grocery store and the parking lot.
All right. And then secondarily, to harken back to your, to the parking spaces, obviously, there is a gas station use there to the west. Are you counting, does this include those parking spaces?
No, sir. The gas station parking spaces are required to have 19 by the square footage of the building, and we are providing 20.
Okay. And then I guess the last question I'd have, Mr. Box, you might know this as well. What's the buildable area on this parcel? Do you know that? Do you know that number offhand? I think you're at 90,000 square feet, roughly?
The grocery store is 90,000 square feet. The gas station is 3,376. But I have no idea what the buildable area is. Mr. Box, can you help me with that?
I don't know off the top of my head the buildable area, but they are definitely set back further than they're required.
Is it possible, because I think we might be a while on public comment, is it possible for you to look into that and get an approximate within a 5,000 or 10,000, I would say?
Sure.
I should have asked you that before the meeting. My apologies. That's all the questions I had for the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in your study that you provided to us, you indicated that if we were to reduce the number of parking spaces, it also allows Meyer to minimize the stormwater impacts on the property. Could you clarify that or explain that?
Yes. That reduction is referring to the loss of the islands and the loss of the trees. And by paving those areas, it gives stormwater less area to infiltrate into the ground or to be absorbed and transpired back into the atmosphere. And that will all necessarily then run off into the drainage system in the township.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer? Okay.
I think that might be all we have for the moment. Did you want to move on to the sign then next?
No, we've tabled the signs. We can go to the building height, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
The building height is a little bit less complicated from the site perspective. And so we again have existing conditions that provide a practical difficulty for us on the site. However, they're much less than on the parking. The existing conditions are the existing Comerica Bank in the southeast corner, the existing Goddard Daycare in the north... I'm sorry, I said southeast. I meant southwest. Existing southwest corner, and the existing Goddard Daycare in the northwest corner. And what those existing facilities do is a fantastic job of obstructing our building from the motoring public on Hayes Road. And so what we have proposed is to place our front entry at 36'2 inches, which is essentially the exact same height as the Comerica Bank, our gas station in Canopy, and the Goddard School when viewed from Hayes Road. And I sent Josh an email later this afternoon. I don't see it made it into the presentation. I don't know if he has it available to pull up, or if we'll just have to forego that. But those images depict the glass vestibule, and the top of the glass vestibule actually being about halfway to two-thirds of the way up on the Comerica Bank roof, approximately even with our gas station canopy, and about the same on the Goddard School. And so when viewed from Hayes Road, what the elevated height is going to allow us to do is allow our building to be competitive with the adjacent businesses and provide the same view that they enjoy. However, we've been very conscientious in that we do not want to impact the neighbors any more than necessary. And so we have also studied the view from the neighbors, the back of the neighbors' homes. On the east, those homes are approximately 35 to 40 feet off the property line. And on the north, they're in the neighborhood of 65 feet. And the area that we're requesting to have the height variance will not be visible from either those on the east or those on the north, should they open their slider door and look out. And that's going to be because the height of the wall of the building closest to them will be what they'll see. And so they would have to be on the north approximately 10 feet tall in order to see any of the height variance that's being requested, or on the east approximately 20 feet tall in order to see the area that the height variance is being requested. So the area of the building that they'll be able to view from their homes will be ordinance compliant. Also, I wanted to mention that the variance request is just for the entry vestibule, and that is less than 15% of our building facade. So 86% of our building is going to be ordinance compliant. It's just 14%, excuse me, of our building facade is what the variance is being requested on. So that concludes my practical difficulty and explanation of the request. More than happy to answer questions on that as well, or Mr. Jones can do the same.
Any questions for the petitioner? Did you have something further? Or I'm not sure if you were just standing for questions or had another question?
Well, I'd just like to just add on to Jason's presentation, just very briefly. And I wanted you guys to know that this is, this will be Meyer's very first store constructed of this size, and in our six-state footprint. It's not a supercenter. Our closest supercenters to this, to Macomb Township are in Washington Township, Shelby Township, Chesterfield Township. All those exceed 200,000 square feet. Two of those have, you know, in excess of 1,000 parking spaces. And I just wanted to let you know that, you know, Meyer has taken a really careful look at this facade, and we've tried to articulate the facade with multiple different heights, multiple different colors, and multiple parapets to screen, rooftop units and mechanical units. And the glass front is something new for us, and the corner entry is new. And it creates a lot of natural sunlight, a lot of energy savings. It's something we've thought a lot about and traveled around the country looking at other, you know, facilities and other grocery stores in Texas and California, Florida. So there's a lot of thought that goes into these in years of planning. And I just, these items are not, are not, obviously not a hardship, but I just wanted to point them out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right. Hearing none, we're going to take it out to the public. Before we get started, a couple things. When you come up, please make sure you state your name and address for the record. We have two variance requests on this issue, so I would ask that you specify which variance you are speaking to. Josh did mention this earlier, and I think we all understand there's probably a lot of people here that are not in favor of this development. But remember that we do have a narrow lane we're looking at here tonight. So if you can keep your comments to what we are considering, there will be future meetings for other discussions. But if you can, if you can keep it, we're looking for specific things for what we have to do here tonight. So if you can make your comments to those, they're going to be the most effective for you, and they're going to be the most helpful for us. If you go on to things that aren't necessarily within what we're doing, it's not necessarily going to do anything, and it will, it will take a long time. And I just want to make sure that I make that comment. So we'll get through whoever wants to speak here. And if, I believe we have one gentleman already, I would mention online. If you'd like to speak, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand on the hand app. I haven't had a large crowd where we had to do both in-person and Zoom before, so I'm not entirely sure how we're going to do this yet. But please queue up online if you'd like to speak, and if you're in person, feel free to queue over here.
Mr. Chairman, I know during our Board of Trustees meetings, we do have time limits, I believe, on speaking. Are we going to do that today?
I believe we have a time limit of four minutes. And so what I will say is if, and actually, because of the number of people, I probably will watch it more than normal. I will let you know if we're approaching the four minutes. And generally, we want you guys to be able to speak, but we also want to keep the meeting going. So if you're approaching your time, I will let you know. It's not going to be personal to anybody. It's not, it's going to be regardless of what your comment is. It's just going to be to keep us moving and make sure that we're getting all of our comments out in a timely manner. So go ahead, state your name and address, sir, for the record, and please note which variance request you're referring to.
My name is John Pasquenzou. I live at 53506 Addington Drive. I am the president of the Homeowners Association for Gateway Village that you guys are speaking of to the north of this development. And the first one that I'd like to address would be the height of the building. I believe this height of the building will be over our tree lines. That is on our south wall. And this will impact the homes greatly on that wall. He made a statement, I forget his name, but he said you'd have to be 10 feet tall in order to see the building. Well, I disagree with that. Those trees are only about 20 feet tall in the backyards. And there are also pines which are dying out that are eventually going to have to be replaced with something much shorter. The wall height of the brick there is only six feet tall. But to get back to his statement about being 10 feet tall, what about the second story of every one of these homes in the bedrooms, where they are going to be staring above those tree lines directly into this building? That light will affect the way these people sleep and live. So that was one of the points. And then he said that he was going to be making... Oh, that is on my next point. So to get then to the parking, these 50 spots, to me, tells me he's trying to put too large of a facility into too small a space for that variance.
If you could, sir, I won't penalize you on time here. We do understand everyone has feelings here, and I don't mean to curtail clapping. But if you can just maintain it, there'll be a lot of people you'll agree with tonight. And if we clap every time, we'll all take a lot longer. So we hear you, we see you, but if you can maintain the clapping, we'd appreciate it. Go ahead, sir.
So the park, in regards to the, in regards to curbside parking, these parking spaces, as he stated and in the diagram, if you could flip to it so everybody can know what I'm talking about, these parking spaces for this curbside pickup are on the north side of the building, which is directly on the other side of our wall. So now you're talking about every three to five minutes, people picking up, which means these cars will all be running. The emissions will all be coming into the air over that wall anytime that wind is going north. And we will all be inhaling that, those emissions. That's not good for us or our children. And then he said he was making modifications to the sewers that our sub uses. And has there been any studies? How is that going to impact us? How is Meyer and all that drain water going to impact our draining water now? Is that going to make us have backups in our basements that we've spent hundreds of thousands doing bars, kitchens, to enjoy our life in our basements? I'm curious, what's that going to do to us? I think that is all I have for now. But I will be speaking again in future meetings on other topics.
I appreciate it. One thing I do want to mention, too, and this is typical for us when we have a lot of people, we're going to aggregate questions, and we'll try to make sure that questions that we believe are pertinent here specifically get answered when we're done. But in order to not go back and forth, we're going to have you guys speak. We'll write things down, and we'll address them when we're done. So just, we're not ignoring you when I come up here, but I want you to let me know how we typically do this. Go ahead, ma'am.
Tall people. My name is Terry Coe. I live at 16681 Field Stone Ridge. I guess I had some questions on Mr. Box's talk that he did and some other questions that have come up. And I guess, to address the parking issue first, if they got the extra, if we made them put in the extra 50 spaces, didn't they say it would take away from the landscaping and that they could put them in, but there is room for them, but it would take away all the landscaping and things like that? And the other thing was, if this is denied, or if the height variance is denied, will that stop Meyer from going in? I mean, you can't stop them as of the ZBA, can you? I mean, that's...
Well, we'll comment on it when we get to the end. We'll comment when we get to the end.
Okay. And also, someone had asked the question if we could force them to go somewhere else, but I'm assuming they have to buy the property, so I just wanted to make that statement also. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
My name is Susan Carlson, and I live at 53171 Bayberry Drive, which is just to the east of where this Meyer would be. I agree with everything the first two speakers said, and like you guys, kind of can't talk about certain things. But the one thing I want to talk about is, if these are not granted, the gentleman speaking was almost using a threatening tone by saying, "Well, if we don't get, if we don't get this, then we're going to make it less aesthetic or less this or less this," which makes us as the people who live here feel like this is all being done. And maybe it is too big a building and too big of, too many, that we shouldn't grant these variances because there's a lot of places that they could build to the east, to the left. If they need these variances, maybe this is not the place for them. You also said there's a zoning meeting this on July 20th. I hope you reiterate when we can be there and where that's going to be. But I don't appreciate, my board, I've been here 30 years, someone telling me that if we don't do these variances, they're just going to make it a worse situation for us. It's not a good situation. I have 14 stores I can go to just very near here, within five miles. I don't need another one, and I don't need someone telling you as the board that they're trying to make it nice. I appreciate that, but there's just too much that it impacts on all of us. I have a second storehouse, too. I don't want to see the Meyer building. When I look out my building, I don't want the extra light coming in to the... When I look out my building, I don't want the extra light coming in to the home. Again, a lot of places could be there that aren't as intrusive. Build somewhere where people can choose where they want to live. Don't impose on my neighborhood where I've been there for 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I do want to mention before we go on to the next thing, and I know some people, uh, talked about this to me before I came, uh, without regard, without regard to actual facts, but as a general thing, and there's worry that, uh, you know, corporate individuals or, or public might, might threaten the board on one way or the other. And I just want to let you guys know, regardless of the side, our job here is to try to judge on the facts. It's not to take a side, it's not to be threatened by one side or the other, and we take that very seriously. So from, from any angle, I want to assure you guys, we're not here to be threatened. We're going to take our best look at it and make the best judgment. So go ahead, sir.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Tuckfield, members of the board. Name is Ryan Tangler. I reside at one five three six eight Amberfield Drive, Compton Township, just to the north of this development. Um, in regards to the two variances now being discussed, this evening, I feel that those requests exceed the proper use of zoning of this piece of property that borders a quiet and peaceful neighborhood. We respectively ask that the ZBA ensures that the proposed developments on this partial adhere to all zoning requirements set forth in McCombe Township's master plan and zoning code. Um, and I have to disagree with Mr. Box on the fact that the ZBA doesn't have the ability to stop this. It's outlined in your guys' SOPs. I mean, if you look at your, your chart, I mean, it pretty much says that we're conducting the public hearing right now and then you have the ability to make a final decision and then you can actually table the applicant and then you can, you know, deny the application, which to me would prevent this from coming into our neighborhood. Um, I also have to disagree that we won't be able to see the structure from our homes. Like, uh, our HOA president mentioned, most of us in that subdivision have two-story homes and we have large windows on the back from our catwalks. We'll be able to see the structure, no problem. And, you know, I, I think light pollution is going to be a huge factor. I would hope that you guys, uh, would consider this and, uh, I will be back to speak, um, during the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ron Morris. I live at one five three two nine Amberfield in Gateway Village Estates. Uh, I just have a question as it relates to the very, the height variance to the petitioner. Since they've indicated that this was the first of its kind to be done, what was a light study conducted to show the light pollution as far as how far it's going to range? Was that conducted? Because the individuals in the sub just north of us, as it's indicated, they will, just for the height variance, you know, will that light impact statement shine right into the back of their houses? I am going to echo, uh, what the, uh, our homeowner association president said as far as the, uh, pollution's, uh, emission, so I won't go into that. Uh, the individual here in the blue shirt, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name. You made a reference to imagine for the height variance. That's on the south side of the height variance. The, what it faces is the strip mall, not houses. So you can grant a height variance for that. I don't think anybody would oppose that. I think you're going to have to, I would request to deny the height variance because the height variance is now going to impact the lighting for the residents on the south side of Gateway Village Estates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Amanda Opelousky. I live at one five two five six Piermont, um, which is the street that would actually, my property would border, uh, the parking lot of this development. And, um, I would also just like to echo, uh, my master bedroom, uh, bathroom and my daughter's bedroom, um, do look out over onto this property. And so I can tell you for a fact that we would indeed see the Meyer signage, uh, from our second story. One of my concerns about these variances, I know we're only discussing the two, but there are three, is that it seems as though the township is altering the existing zoning code to fit the development when I feel like it is the, um, the BZA's job and the planning commission's job to make sure that the development fits the existing zoning code. So that is my concern as a resident and I would also like to state as well that, um, other developments that have similar signage are in C3 and C4 zoning areas like the two Krogers that exist in the township, not C2s. So thank you.
And again, if you could, we, we know everybody agrees, I just want to keep everything moving smoothly. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name's Chad Miller. I live at one seven zero nine three Huntington Woods Drive. Uh, two easy questions and a hard one. What's the size of the parking spaces? Do you have any dedicated employee parking space? And lastly, um, you mentioned that this is a new idea, more drive-through parking spaces for the pharmacy and the food. That seems to be predicated on the idea that that's a permanent shift in emp- in, uh, customers. It, has there been any study to see that that's not a dynamic shift, that, that that's not going to return to a, a normal state once COVID is winding down? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Um, my name is Linda Maynerich.
Hannah Maynerich.
We live at one five seven two one Camden Drive, which is just to the east of where they want to do this. I have a second story home, which is not, Bayberry is right be, right to the east. Camden is, I'm second house in. All of our windows will see, um, that increased site or, you know, building height of 36 feet, 36.2 feet, along with what everyone else stated, the lights that are going to be on these bill, on the building and on that frontage. Isn't that what a sign is for? Instead, you know, to be seen from the roads, not to increase the building height, but just the lights that are going to be on that building shining into our quiet neighborhood. You know, and, and he stated that if he had to go to 450 spaces, that he would be forced to, they would be forced to encroach on the easements of consumers' energy and make it less safe. He stated that. So his option, if he can't get this variance, is that he's going to make it less safe when it's so close to our neighborhoods? As John had spoken earlier, the exhaust fumes that are going to come from those three-minute, you know, parking to get their online orders, we're to the east. The wind usually blows to the east or to the northeast. It's going to go into our neighborhoods. It's going to affect our health. It's going to be seeing that from our windows, our upstairs windows, and even I would be able to see it from my front yard because I'm set back far enough that I can see over those houses and in between the houses that are on Bayberry. So that's going to, you know, affect our property values. We've spent a lot of money maintaining our house. I've lived in this home since 1997. We have replaced just about everything imaginable that was builder grade on it and now my property values are going to go down because we're going to see a Meyer from our house.
Then I would just like to say, just in regards to the, uh, the parking, um, I know, understand that we are moving on to more internet purchases and everything. What that does change, and I deal with this in my, 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 my corporate job, is that there's a substitution effect. There are more people that now have to be hired by Meyer that will have employees filling up parking spots. I know they'll have more turnaround over at, at the, you know, online pickup area, but there will be more employees working at Meyer, having to shop for the people. That cars will be there all day. So having the awareness of reducing the number of parking space just doesn't make sense to me. And it's also a substitution of if they have to stay within the 450 vehicles, then it's clearly they could put 50 vehicles where they're proposing to put a gas station. They want to have their cake and eat it too, as get the gas station, get the larger store and reduce the parking for all the people that work there.
And one item that hasn't been talked about is what about the delivery trucks? Where do those go? Has anybody thought about that? Where do they go in and out?
As, as a-
When are those deliveries going to take place?
A- as a note, that is something that we will typically, uh, address at the planning commission phase for the site plan, just so you're aware.
And, and again, like my wife said, we're a block off of Bayberry. So I understand the people and I, I feel bad for them backing up right to it, but that site variance with the, the height of the building going farther, the angle that we have, we will see it because we are further back off, off of, um, the brick wall that's along, um, Bayberry and backing up to the store.
And at night, we'll, we'll never be able to have our windows open because that light's going to flood into our, our bedroom, which faces right where that, you know, increase in variance would be.
Thank you.
Thank you for trying.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, Amanda Opelousky again. I just had a, a question for the board. The proposed parking spaces that are now going to be used as, uh, drive-up areas waiting for groceries to come out, what would that be considered under the zoning code? Is that a, like a drive-through? What, how is that being considered? And then that's my question.
Very good. And I would just mention, obviously, uh, you, you came up and you asked it, we generally are only going to do one, one session per person during this commentary. So I appreciate the question. It's a good question. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Amir Haskich. Uh, I live at one five eight seven seven T-Rose. Um, I'm in the neighborhood to the east of the proposed site. Um, I have many questions, but due to the, you know, what we're dealing with right now and the questions that, um, we're allowed to ask at this particular meeting. My only question is, um, what is the, I, I know they mentioned that this is a grocery store, but being as someone that has worked in retail in my previous lives, um, what is the, I guess, ratio grocery to other items that are going to be available at this particular location because that will affect, uh, the amount of shoppers at the store?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We'll go low for this. Hi, I'm Chris Sturz and I live at five three four six four Abraham Drive. I'm east of the location site and I really just want to share a comment based on talking about the height of the building, um, but it also relates to the building in general. I used to live in Ray Township. I used to live at 26 and Romeo Plank. It was very rural. Uh, so they built a gas station on the corner and we were probably a half mile up Romeo Plank, but there was no buildings blocking. Um, I have to tell you, I remember the day I walked in my bedroom and I thought, where's the light? Who's got a light on? Who's outside shining a light in my window? And it was nobody. It was the building. And then Kroger went in. And when Kroger went in, you didn't even have to turn a light on in the bedroom. And maybe it's not a half mile, but at least a quarter mile away from the store, but nothing blocking that light. So me personally, where I live, I will not experience that light. I am closer to Lutheran High North, but I am speaking in support of all the residents here. I cannot even imagine how that will change their quality of home life. Every night, all of their blinds are going to need to be shut unless they need to see around. They're never going to trip over anything in the dark because they won't have dark anymore. So I just wanted to share that. I do speak from experience. I did see a development go in and it did radically change. I know traffic has nothing to do with it, but it radically changed the traffic volume. It changed the light volume, the noise volume and the pollution volume. So thank you.
I live at five three one 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 Bayberry. That's right in my backyard. My name's Virginia Zerelli.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and you did, sorry.
We don't want Myers there. We don't need Myers there. The, the traffic is terrible now. You can't even get out of our street. The kids at the schools, they're going to be breathing all those fumes. They're in danger. The school buses and everything. This should not be built in our area. There's other areas for this and somebody else told me, they live by one of the smaller Myers and they said it's terrible. There's crime behind those buildings, drugs. This is where the kids are, long buildings where people don't see, you know? And that's in my backyard. I don't want it there.
You have to excuse me for sitting. I had surgery on my back and can't stand much longer.
No problem at all. If I could, sir, if you can make sure you state your name and address, name and address for the record.
My concern is traffic. Both 24 Mile and Hayes, thank you, are one lane. This Morris is going into a residential area, which means we got all these kids out there and there's nowhere to expand the roadway. They're looking for trouble. We had two deaths this year on 24. And, and right. No, not right. Anyway, that's the whole point, is the traffic. Traffic is terrible. And unlike the one on 26, my, Myers on 26 and the Myers on, uh, thank you. Those roadways are four lanes in each direction. Here, one lane in each direction. Trouble. Thank you.
Uh, sir, if, if you could, I believe, I believe this was Mr. Zerelli. If you could, just make sure he states his name and address for the record.
I'm sorry.
Could, could you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Uh, then just careful of the status.
Can, can you please state, have him state his name and address for the record?
Name is Tom Michael Azak. Five three one 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 Bayberry Drive.
Very good. Thank you, sir, and thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Sir, just be careful when you cross over the cord here. Just, I wanted to make that. Okay.
Very good. Is there any, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Oh, no.
No, I just-
Don't trip.
Sir, there's a step there, please.
Sorry. It's all, it's, we're all, ma'am, it's all good.
Just because there's a step, we didn't want him to trip.
Hi, I'm Julianne Kuzmano, one six one eight eight Jenny Drive. Um, I do not do good at this, at the microphone, so I apologize. My question-
Julianne, you'll be fine. Go ahead.
Um, 400 slots with one entrance. I'm not getting it. There's one entrance. Where's the gas station? Where's the gas trucks going to pull up with the trucks for, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And then the hours, nobody mentioned when they're going to be opened. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the same way. I've never done this before. My name's Abby Collins.
Be, be fine, be calm. A lot of people don't do this, you'll be all fine.
I live on one five three eight six Piermont, so I am to the north. My backyard will back up to this building, um, and I disagree that we won't see it. When I sit in our kitchen, I am a person that loves light. I open all our blinds. I mean, it can be nine, 10, 12 o'clock at night and my blinds, my curtains all open because I just like that open house feeling. And I disagree that we will not see this, especially with the height increase because I can see straight to Hayes. I see the motorcycles, the cars, the trucks, the everything. Um, I can't say that I've seen the Comerica. I can't say that I've seen out of our backyard the Goddard School, but I know increasing this height is going to, I'm going to see it no matter what and I just have a big problem with that.
Thank you. And you did fine. Thanks for coming up.
Peter Schmidt. I live on fifty three zero zero three Bayberry. That's lot number one of the Bayberry subdivision. Uh, I'm actually the next door neighbor to the Myers and my major concern is the delivery trucks during the night, the beep 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 backing up will be in front of my bedroom. And my major concern is the delivery trucks during the night, the beep 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 backing up, will be in front of my bedroom. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Charles Gray. I live at 27643 North Bullwood Drive in Harrison Township. I used to live in Macomb Township. I'm here to support everybody against Meyer. So my main concern really is the noise. The trucks going in and out. See, we got one way of getting in. How are the trucks going to get through? So I do food delivery for a living. And, you know, it's a lot, you know, waiting on orders and stuff. And then, like you said, three minutes. It's going to take longer than that. It usually takes me 45 minutes to get one delivery done for Meyer order. And another thing, too, is the pollution. We got kids that go to school there. We got residents surrounding, in the surrounding neighborhoods right there. And, you know, they probably have health issues that we need to know about. So really, I don't think this is necessary at all. I mean, I feel like there's something that can be more appropriate that could go right there besides Meyer. Really, that's all I got for now.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Anything else, anything else new up here? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Mary Beth Tice. I do not live in the township, but I am the owner of the Goddard School, and I have some concerns. I have some concerns about the parking. I have some concerns about how it's going to be right up to my playground. And I have some concerns about the gas station because there is two entrance ways. One is my entrance way, which is going to go into the gas station as well. There's a lot of little kids in that area, and I don't really want all that pollution, right, going onto my playground. And I also have to say that the homeowner association president has a very good point about the rainwater runoff. My playground is flooded all the time. So if they decide that they're going to go for the 50 parking spots and change the way they have the plan, that's fine, but you are going to have puddles there. And I don't know if you guys have any problems with your water or your basement, but I have a ton of problems with water in my playground. So that is something that probably needs to be evaluated. Somebody definitely needs to take a look at that. I'm also concerned about the safety of my playground at night. If it's a 24-hour shopping center, how are they going to guarantee that there isn't riffraff or just people in general going out onto my playground? And securing the safety of my building that's been there for 13 years. So those are my concerns. I'd love to talk to you guys about what your plan is to buffer my school from your parking lot.
Ma'am, if you can make sure you address it into the microphone.
Well, I want to make sure they understood that I want them to talk to me about buffering their parking lot from my playground.
And I understand. I understand. I just need to make sure it's on the record. And when you turn around, we don't get it on the mics, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional or new comments from the public here? Seeing none at this time, Mr. Ivanowski, how many hands do we have raised?
We have two people willing to talk. First would be Mr. Michaeli Powell. Sorry if I...
He said two, and he mentioned it to the mic, which Zoom will be able to hear them even if we're not, and then we'll be able to hear it out of the speaker. So to the gentleman online, Bob, what was his name?
Michaeli Powell.
Mr. Powell, I believe Mr. Ivanowski has unmuted you. If you'd like to speak, please state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Yes, my name is Michaeli Powell. I live at 52452 Maurice Drive in the Sawmill Creek subdivision to southeast of the neighborhood of the proposed Meyer. And I would like to say that you as the zoning board have the power to rezone the property. And I propose that you rezone the property as a park. In our subdivisions, there are, when they were built, there were no parks or anything built into our subdivisions. And this created a lack, a great lack of any kind of recreational areas or, you know, community gathering spots within our neighborhoods. Especially for our young adults who, you know, do not have automotive transportation. Instead of zoning this as a park, instead would provide recreational opportunities to young adults during the summer and cut down on crime. And I believe that, you know, this is also not a good location for the Meyer. I believe a better location would be just a mile south where there was supposed to be Kohl's built. Because 23 Mile Road has better access, is wider, and also has better freeway access. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Got another person there, Mr. Ivanowski?
Yes. Alicia Moore.
Ms. Moore, if you'd like to speak, I believe Mr. Ivanowski has unmuted you. Please state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Yep. My name is Alicia Moore. I live at 15251 Amberfield, just north of the proposed Meyer. I just want to display my concerns against both variances. One for the extreme light pollution that's going to affect my neighbors as well as myself. We're going to be able to see this facility, obviously. Two, the safety concerns of all the health of us from these gas stations that will emit fumes, especially for these children that are playing in Goddard School. If I was a parent with one of my children going to this school, I would have to take them out because, I mean, there's direct, as a medical professional myself, there's direct links to childhood leukemia with inhalation of gas fumes. So that's all I'd like to say.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody with anything new that they'd like to speak about, both in person or in the crowd?
Mr. Doug Field, we have one more person.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ivanowski.
I'm sorry if I'm going to mispronounce the last name, but it's Kayla Van Flatteren.
I'm going to try it, too. Ms. Van Flatteren, if you could give your name and address, I believe Mr. Ivanowski has unmuted you, and give any comments you might have. People must know her name because I saw some nods. Is Van Flatteren correct? Okay, Ms. Van Flatteren, if I can get the name out correctly myself.
Yes, I'm sorry.
There you go. Go ahead and state your name and address and give any comments you might have.
My name is Kayla Van Flatteren, and I live at 53528 Fitzgerald Drive, which is located just north of this development. My children also attend the Goddard School. In regards to the parking lot and reducing the number of spaces that are required and sharing a parking lot with the preschool that's located directly next to it, it creates a major safety issue for my children and the hundreds of children that attend that school. I would also like to mention that there is no need for another Meyer in this area, and the thousands of people that oppose this project will not shop there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else with anything new who'd like to speak? Go ahead, ma'am, if you could come up and state your name and address for the record. Sir, were you speaking as well?
I'd like to.
Why don't you go ahead and go first, because I think you had been up there.
Here?
Yes, yes, please.
I'm Matt Lang. I live at 15386 Piermont. My backyard will also be backing up to this Meyer. And I think the other residents and other people that live in the area have voiced enough concerns where, I was just going to say, are there any representatives from Meyer here? I just wanted to try and... Hi, guys. Just wanted to try and appeal to you guys, like, you know, there's plenty of undeveloped area or land in the area that you can move this to that wouldn't be in a subdivision. That's all I really wanted to say. You know, again, 23 Mile Road, haze, tons of land, ready to go. You don't necessarily need to be in a subdivision. I know this isn't you directly, but I feel like I'm speaking to you, so. You know, if you look at some of the other Myers and some of these other big shopping centers, they don't have subdivisions that have residents and people that live there.
If I can, I know you're addressing them, but we got to keep it on the record.
You're right. And that's all I really wanted to say. I just wanted to appeal and just say, hey, you know, it doesn't necessarily need to be there, you know. We'd love to have it in the neighborhood or whatever, but not in our neighborhood. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
My name is Melanie Kern. I live at 15391 Haverhill. I live at between 21 and 22 off of Hayes. And I just wanted to know how many of all the Myers that have been built in Michigan were built into a residential area. I mean, I just don't understand why this is even going there. These families were all there first. There is a school. It's like coddling around a school. I just don't as well understand why it's even happening. These people deserve what their property values to stay the same. They pay a lot of taxes to live where they're living. It's a beautiful place to live here in Macomb Township. I don't think it needs to be there either. It should go down to 23 Mile, closer to my house, but at least it's already ready for down there. These people, they won't be able to have barbecues in their backyard. They'll hear, they're... I'm sorry, I'm just getting nervous. So I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
How you doing? Edward Puzz, 53147 Bayberry. Where is the proposed truck well?
Sir, first off, we're going to answer questions later, but I would say that that's not a question we're going to be answering at this meeting. That's a question we would be answering at the site plan review, which would be on the 20th. These are only with regards to the parking spots and to the height.
Okay, I'll take it, let's take it back over by the actual, the online shopping. They got eight spaces set up for it. Anybody that's ever been to Kroger's at 23 Mile Road, especially at a holiday, there's 30 cars out there. There's no way that's going to be nowhere near enough. No way. I don't know why we were such good grace to have a smaller Myers put in our backyard. But nevertheless, does anybody without a retention pond, does anybody can explain to me how they plan on properly draining this property on a 24-mile corridor that's notorious for washouts? Anywhere between Van Dyke and Chesterfield, it's washed out multiple times. We've all known that. We've seen the amount of work that's been done on the road. So how is that, how do they plan on crossing that gas main to get to that drain to properly do that parking lot the way it should be without a retention pond? You've heard the complaints of all the water that's in the area already. I mean, everybody needs to really step back and think about what that property should be used for. There's all kinds of places for Myers to go. They don't need that when you've got five grocery stores within three miles. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone with, anybody else with anything new to say? I'm not trying to curtail you. I just would rather get out of here before midnight if possible. I've been there. It's not fun. Mr. Ivanowski, anyone online?
Not at this moment, sir.
All right. That being said, without any further disagreement, I'm going to close the public portion. I want to mention before we go on, I know a lot of people spoke tonight. I know this is a sensitive issue. I appreciate you bearing with me, trying to make sure I keep the meeting in hand. I know this is not easy for anybody. It's not an easy subject, and it's not easy to get up and stand and talk in front of everybody. And all of our other issues here aside, I appreciate everyone coming out, and I appreciate you standing up and speaking. It means a lot. It's part of what we have to do here. And you may not interact with this type of meeting very often, but this is a very important part of our process, and we appreciate you taking part of it. So, that being said, we have some questions. We have a lot of questions. I think we took some notes here. Mr. Box, Mr. Skirdo, I'm not sure how many you took. I think I'd like you, if you can, to answer the ones that you believe are pertinent to tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. We heard them. I'm going to ask our staff to answer, if they can, questions that they believe are pertinent to this request before we move on. And I believe that's mostly going to be Mr. Box, you, and Mr. Skirdo.
Did you have any specific ones that you wished us to address? With regards to parking, I know it was asked, could the parking fit? And I think we did establish it could be fit if they, it could fit if they removed things like the landscaping islands.
Mr. Box, if you could, if you could make sure the mic is in closer.
It could fit if they remove some of the landscaping islands, as well as the area that they're proposing for the online pickup area. That could all be redesigned and put dozens more parking spaces there. I think their purview, what their argument is, is that they're foregoing that process in lieu of what they see as the future of their business.
Understood. I think there'd be a couple of things I'd like to make sure you address. One, I think someone mentioned, I believe one of our phone-ins mentioned that we had the authority to rezone the parcel. Does this body have the authority to rezone a parcel?
No, this body is the last step before our circuit court. It looks at case-by-case issues on dimensional requirements, and it rules on those specific dimensional requirements. It does not have the authority to rezone property, nor should it. That is, rezoning property is a planning commission recommendation following by a township board approval. This board can look at a variance, can deny a variance, but it cannot stop the process of site plan review by the petitioner to move forward. It's a planning commission function. So if that helps out with what you're looking at tonight, tonight you're simply looking at the number of parking spaces and simply looking at the height request. Nothing else. Everything else is fair game, all good questions. They should be posed to the planning commission on the 20th of this month.
Okay, another general question that I wanted to address, some people indicated that the votes tonight could potentially require this development to not move forward. Are we, if we approved or denied variances, does that approve or deny this development?
No, that's up to the petitioner at that point.
Okay. And the petition, I believe, has indicated that they have some other method. If we denied the parking variance, there is another method that they would pursue, and I'm not sure what would happen with the height, but they've indicated that if we were denied, it would change the development, not stop the development. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. Yep, it's correct.
Okay. I think there was a number of good questions there. Again, some of them are more for the site plan. I think those were a lot of the general ones. I know I have some questions for the petitioner, but does anybody have any questions for Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo off of those?
I think mine's for the petitioner, that's one question I have.
Yeah, if you could. Mr. Piper, why don't you go ahead and go first?
With the height variance, people seem to be concerned about how it's going to be shining in their homes and stuff. And my understanding, that's why I asked how that was going to be facing, with it facing towards the, basically it looks like towards the intersection of 24 Mile and Hayes, will the light only go in that direction, or is it going to go towards those homes from the Meyer sign that will be on that facade?
Yeah, thank you. I heard the questions regarding the height as well, and would there be light? I thought, I heard the questions more, what about sight lighting? What about light poles and that type of thing? That's the questions I really heard. But to answer your question, first I would say this is not a 24-hour store.
Let the gentleman speak. We're giving everybody their chance. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I think I was courteous to all the citizens and not interrupted, so I appreciate that. The entrance does face the intersection. It's not facing the residential areas at all. There is lights for safety purposes so people can enter the building and be able to see as they walk into the building. Yes. Will they be seen from the neighbors to the north or neighbors to the east? I think not because of the, you know, the sight lines and the rear of our building being at 22 feet. And Jason's comment about standing on their decks and the height the person would need to be to be able to see the 36-foot element of our building, which is only, you know, 15, 14% of the linear footage of the building.
Well, that was the purpose of my question because I know we cannot consider the other lighting. We can only consider the height.
Right.
But the lighting on that height, that does factor in. That's why I was asking that question. That's why I want to know if that sign will be light pollution towards those residents.
No, sir. The Meyer sign that's on that front of the building is at a lower location and is more geared to the sight lines between Comerica and the planned M Express. Express.
Would you like to comment on that anymore?
Um, I have a question following up along that, and I have the elevations here, but I'm not sure that I can tell from that. I'm just gonna expound on the, on the question. Uh, you indicated that the sign won't have any light pollution, and I, I think I follow your point, that the sign is probably below the level of the parapet.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And, and I agree with Mr. Piper. Whether there were questions about sight lighting, that's out of our purview. I do think that lighting with regards to this height is within our purview.
Absolutely.
Um, and I guess my understanding of this architectural feature, I hate to call it part of the building, 'cause it's more of a feature than it is anything else.
Correct.
It would appear to be primarily made out of glass.
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
So, if it is made out of glass, one would assume that there is light that will be coming out of the back portion of it.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So, I, I guess my question to you, um, I, I, I think I, I see the point of the, of the frontage and, and the advertising, but I also see the point of the residents here tonight, that you're building a glass facade that has light coming out of the back.
Right.
Is there some, hang, hang on. Is, is there, is there some way, we're here to look to see how to balance the ordinance with what is necessary for the land and what is practical and, and meets the full intent of the ordinance.
Right.
The intent of the ordinance is not to put light shining back at, at thirty feet high into the neighborhoods. That's clear. The intent of the ordinance is also to give stores a reasonable ability to advertise. My question to you, I think there is a potential issue here. The residents certainly think there's a potential issue here. Do you have some ideas that you can give us tonight that might be able to bridge those two gaps?
The first thing I would say is that there's a, on the elevation, there's a night, there's a night drawing on the elevation of how it looks at night. And if, um, if Josh could pull that elevation up, there should be that picture on there.
I don't think I have that loaded right now, but I can work on getting that pulled up.
I, I do have that on my, I do have that on my file here.
Okay. Um, it, you know, do you wanna, like, help me on the?
If I could, also, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Box.
Part of the, you know, not to keep pushing everything into the planning commission, but part of the planning commission process for site plan, we do look at lighting, and it has to be zero point zero foot candles, which is essentially zero emissions at the, the property line, or, or the site plan would not be approved. So, that is part of the, the planning commission process as well. And that includes signs and any other light fixture that would be on the property. Um, the, the glass here and, and the signs that are showing in these, these are conceptual. Uh, these could change during the planning commission process. Uh, a, as you mentioned, the glass on the rear of, of the front of the store, that could all change because of light emissions. They might do, get to that point in the process and do their study and realize that it does produce light beyond their property boundaries. And then, at that time, they would change. They're simply asking for the height of, of the structure right now.
And, and I would concur, and I understand, and I, I will say that I'm certainly not an expert in foot candles and in their ability to project. However, if, if there was a sign there that did not produce foot candles, it still would be visible from outside of the property. Um, and I, I, I would say that, that to, to meeting the intent of the ordinance, I, I do, I do see your points. It's certainly a large part of the site plan, but I, I believe it also is, and, and maybe I'm wrong, and, and if you, if you believe I'm wrong, and Mr. Loy, you're feel, feel free to jump in. I do feel it is a, a pertinent portion of the request to discuss the light coming from this and whether or not it, it meets the ordinance. And, and I, I don't want to stray over our boundary here of, of suggesting something, but I do believe the ZBA has the ability to, um, put conditions on our variances. And I guess I would ask you, do you have an issue with putting some type of condition on the, on the variance that would, um, that would block the rear side of, of the sign? You know, i- i- in, in your petition, the, the purpose of the sign, or the stated purpose of the sign, is to advertise to the people on the main roads, and certainly not to advertise to the, to the, uh, to the residents behind. They've, they've indicated they probably wouldn't be interested in that type of advertisement. Um, would you be willing to attach a condition to not make the back glass, I guess is what I'm asking?
Uh, the back of the vestibule or the back of the sign?
Uh, I believe the vestibule, I believe the vestibule is the, is what I'm looking at. So, the raised glass structure that is going to be requiring the variance here.
So, the lighting within the raised glass structure is going to be downcast lighting. It's not going to be projected out. The light that you might see coming out would be light shining from within the store, which is going to have a rough height of twenty-one feet or less, and that's not going to be part of the height variance under consideration. So, the top, the, the top portion of the vestibule is just the architectural feature. It is not intended to project light either towards the neighbors or towards, um, Twenty-four Mile or Hayes. That light is intended to be down, downcast light. So, the back of the Meyer sign, we're happy to make solid. If it isn't already solid, I believe that it is, but if it isn't, I'm happy to have that as a condition of the approval.
But not the rear of the vestibule?
I would say to, to answer that, and I, thanks, Jason, for that explanation. We could definitely put some kinda tent on, so the, some, whatever light spills out of the rear of our vestibule across our roof, we could, we could definitely look at some kind of, um, opaqueness and some kind of, uh, tenting, some kind of, uh, blacking out that area. So, it addresses your concern about, even if that area has some illumination and people can see the illumination, if we can block the illumination from the, from the north and from the east, we will do everything we can to address that concern. And if that is a condition of approval, then we will work with your staff to, to abide by that condition.
And, and I would appreciate, and I would say to the point earlier, you know, we're, our job here is to, to look for reasons that you could not develop the property as zoned, and to make sure that we're meeting the intent of the ordinance. And, and we haven't gotten to determining if, if you couldn't develop it as zoned, but I do think that would help meet the intent of the ordinance. So, I, I appreciate you, you considering that.
Yeah. We don't wanna see a lit or not.
Sir, we, I, I understand, and, and I don't mean to be a broken record here, but, but we've gone through that, that portion of the meeting. Um, I did have, um, I did have one other question, but I'm not sure that I remember what it was. I was listening, and I was not writing down. Any other questions from the petitioners on this, on this item?
Mr. Chairman, there were many, um, questions and concerns with regards to drainage with the water issue. If you could address those, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely. Uh, the drainage will meet the township ordinance, and will meet the Drain Commission standards for soil erosion as well. Uh, both of those permits will need to be applied for, reviewed by the township engineer, determined to be compliant with your standard, uh, prior to us gaining any type of construction approval. And I think that, uh, Mr. Box or the legal counsel can support me in that.
And, and just clarify, if you will, for, for us, uh, with regards to water drainage, greater, greater, uh, I shouldn't use technical speak. I need to make sure it's, uh, greater green areas will help the water drainage as well. The, the more, so, in theory, uh, the way it's designed is better for drainage than the way it could potentially be designed without a parking variance. Is that
That is, that is
accurate because of the increased green space?
That is a correct statement. Um, from an engineering perspective, we look to maximize the green space and minimize the impervious area, in part because the impervious area does create additional stormwater runoff, where the green space does a better job of absorbing and infiltrating. And if there's plants there, transparating the rain, the rainwater.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Kristy.
Nope, that was my question.
Anything else for the petitioners? I did have a question for Mr. Box. I'm not sure if you're able to get to it while we went through comments. Did you have an approximate build area on that lot?
Yeah. So, the full build area, uh, would be about seventy-one percent of the property, which is ten point five acres of the fourteen point seven one acres of the property, uh, and they are, uh, well under that.
What's the, what's the, I should know, square footage per acre calculation?
Uh, forty-three thousand, five sixty, I believe.
We are just over two acres in the store.
So, in theory, the site could hold a four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand square foot store by square footage of the building alone.
Correct.
Okay. Um, understood. Any other questions or comments from the board?
My, uh, Mr. Chairman, my next question is relative to the height variance with, because it's basically discussing the, um, sign. Do you have a monument sign that'll be at the street corner?
Uh, the ordinance allows us two monument signs, and we are proposing a monument sign, uh, in front of the gas station and a monument sign along Twenty-four Mile.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to tack onto that, there, they can not exceed nine feet in height.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I, I will, Mr. Tuckfield, like to point out too, that I, I did pull up the rendering. He referenced, uh, the night vision showing their downlighting is what they're proposing for the, the signage and for the front of the store.
And, and Mr. Box, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, the sight lighting is certainly something we look at, um, with regards to, uh, with regards to the site plan.
Correct.
And, and for those who are interested, if you go along Hall Road, you can see a lot of different examples of sight lighting, um, and the different abilities for sites to keep light within their property. Uh, so, if anybody's interested in a really dull drive, uh, it's interesting to do. Uh, any other questions, uh, from the board? Any com, any more comments, Mr. Box? Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, one, uh, one person did ask about the parking space size. Uh, a lot of communities have nine-foot wide parking spaces. Uh, our community requires ten-foot wide parking spaces, and all of theirs conform to that.
Okay. I actually do have something, uh, and hopefully this doesn't take us too long, but, uh, this was actually just one of my main notes on this. Uh, the petitioner has to come before the planning commission for an SLU. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, one of my concerns, and I'll, I'll note this to the, to the petitioners, 'cause this is gonna probably be one of my recommendations, is that, um, the, the nature of what we're being asked is to look at less parking spots than we would typically allow for this area. And part of it is not even a variance, it's a difference on how we create our zoning. I think there is also potential practical difficulties as well, but when I look at the fact that there is a special land use, um, I, I think that the parking might be appropriately conditioned on the special land use being approved, uh, for the reason that it's, it is a slightly different store. We're saying it's slightly different. And if the special land use is being approved, then we're, then that will be saying that it is a proper use in that regard for the parcel. So, I think I talked to Mr. Box about this, um, and this, this was something we had commented, that it might be, might be appropriate. And, Mr. Loy, you're certainly welcome to chime in on this. Might be appropriate to make it contingent upon the special land use because of the nature of, it, it is, it is an accepted use, but it's also going before the special land use and, and making sure that it is, uh, consistent with, uh, consistent with the idea of what we're putting on that property.
You specify which special land use you're referencing?
Um, I believe the special land use is with regards to the pharmacy and, and other things of that nature that do interact specifically with parking.
Mr. Box, which special land use specifically would that require? The fact that the pharmacy, it's, the pharmacy's drive-through.
Yeah.
It, it's on C2, so the grocery store, uh, there's no question about the fact that that's allowed in that zone. Um, we have, as you know, in our, our ordinance, we have a list of permitted uses. That's what grocery falls under.
That's correct.
Then we have a list of special land uses that need that, uh, I guess, extra approval, uh, and the drive-through is one of those items. So, the fact that the pharmacy has a drive-through is what's requiring the, the special land use. Yeah. So, uh, so Chairman, you can put tho, those types of conditions on the, uh, on the approval of the variance.
Okay. You, you would, I just confirm, I wanna make sure I'm not stepping out of our bounds. I believe the two are tied together, but I don't want to overstep something either.
Well, it appears they are, because what, the reason why they're requesting the variance in the parking, uh, one of them was cited was that they do have a pharmacy drive-through, and they do have the, the, I know it's Kroger, but ClickList, or whatever you wanna call it, a parking area, which is taking up some of the areas where they would normally have parking. So, I believe that that would be tied to it, and that would be a reasonable condition that the, uh, ZBA could put on it.
Okay. And I believe the petitioners are, uh, conferencing, so I don't wanna interrupt them. But do you understand the, the?
We do. We, uh, Jason and I were just talking about it as you guys were talking, and it sounds like it's, that the special land use would need to be approved for the pharmacy drive-through to, and it ties into the variance on the parking spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's what I'm hearing. And I have no objection to that.
But, one of my concerns is that I don't, obviously, this board doesn't have the ability to grant a land use, and I don't want to venture into that area. So, I, to me, this seemed like the safest way to make sure that we look at the practical difficulty, but we're not overriding the proper use of the property either. Okay. Um, all right. Uh, I would, unless anyone has any comments, uh, further than that, I would say that we're looking at potentially two, um, two, words are escaping me here. Uh, we are looking at two variances, but we're looking at two contingencies on the variance, uh, that, that I think would be appropriate. Uh, one would be that the parking would be contingent upon the special land use being approved at the planning commission, and two, that the height requirement, um, would be granted with the contingent, i- if the board wished to grant it, would be contingent upon making the rear of the elevated portion opaque, uh, so that light would not travel through it as it would through glass. Um, and that would be my recommendation. Uh, and, Mr. Box, you're certainly welcome to comment on it. I don't wanna drive those through. I felt they were reasonable, but certainly maybe it's just
No, I think those are fair, and, and, uh, we did pull up on, on Dave's computer here, uh, the, the more detailed elevations. The backside, I, I think, uh, Mr. Vanderkote is correct. The backside is already solid of what they're proposing. It's not glass all the way through.
Okay. So, in, in theory, it might already meet that, but this would mean that if it was going through the
Yep. But again, that, that's conceptual, so I think the
It could change at some point.
It could change. So, the contingency that you're, you're, uh, proposing, I, I think is fair to make sure that, uh, if that's your wish, that they keep that solid.
Okay.
So, to be clear, the, the conceptual, uh, design does allow natural sunlight through the vestibule
Hmm.
as part of our entryway. However, if the board would like us to look at the rear differently, we're happy to do that.
Very good. I, I appreciate it. Um, I appreciate it. Uh, so, to the board, that would be, uh, my suggestion. Um, I think I've, uh, brought both of these exceptions up. I'm willing to make motions if, if you guys would rather that I do it, 'cause I think I brought both of them up.
Well, Mr., I would just like to comment, Mr. Chairman, that when you review the information that we got from, um, the planning consultant, it indicates under the height section that uh, conformity with the strict letter of ordinance does not seem unnecessarily burdensome. And I would agree with that based on the arguments that were given here tonight by the petitioner. Um, what they indicated in here is that an increase in height would allow for strengthened visibility from adjacent roadways. Um, I don't know that that's a hardship or, or a, uh, practical difficulty. And they did indicate that they will have signage located on both Twenty-four Mile Road and Hayes. So, I think, don't think they can argue that the, uh, signage wouldn't be visible if they conformed to the ordinance. I will say that, um, the homeowners, uh, that live there now have, um, hopefully did their research when they purchased this home, and they saw that there's vacant land at that corner. And when they saw the vacant land, they may have done some research to see what type of zoning ordinances there were on, um, a commercial building that is allowed to go there. And if they did, it indicates that the height cannot exceed twenty-five feet. So, in their minds, if something was to go there, the height would not exceed twenty-five feet. Maybe that was of some, some form of comfort to them. I'm not sure. But when you're purchasing a home and you do your researches to what's surrounding you, and you look at the variances, and you understand that a lot is, um, zoned commercial, then you may look at, uh, the zoning information, may or not, but it does say twenty-five feet. So, I, I, I do, I do think that to conform with the ordinance, um, as a burdened, uh, practical difficulty doesn't really exist. It would be, um, not wise to, um, approve that variance.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Posey. Any other?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments?
I just, I just wanna be clear that in the event that, uh, you do make the variance condition on the special land use, that you articulate that it's for the far, the special land use for the pharmacy drive-through, so that it's clear if that condition is, is in the motion.
Understood. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Loy. Um, okay. Uh, I will entertain any motions. Are there any, any motions on this item? And I would say that if we take motions on this, we should take them, uh, one variance at a time, uh, as they are two separate and distinct issues here.
I will make the motion for the, uh, variance for the parking, um, contingent on the special land use going before the planning commission, getting that because of the, uh, pharmacy, uh, 'cause that will make a difference on the parking. Um, I, the reason I agree with this is I do think that having the, uh, extra green belt, if you will, uh, for the impervious, to avoid the impervious parking lot spaces, I think will help with the drainage. Uh, I think the overall picture, it will help the community. I think the overall picture, it will help the community. I, I look at myself as being the citizens representative on this board. I'm, I'm not technically sound, if you will, as far as building codes. But I look at it definitely, they can build this store no matter what, whether we grant this variance or not. I think this is the best compromise to allow the fewer parking spaces to help accommodate the business, and at the same time, hopefully will help the residents in the long run, the overall population. And I, I say it with reservations, because it's, it's a very close call for me. But I will make that motion to grant that variance with the contingency that the special land use for the pharmacy is, is approved.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. Is there any discussion on the motion? I would make one comment on this, and that, well, I say one comment. I'm known to be rather chatty, so everybody worries when I say one comment. When we have to look at these, we have to look to see if there's a practical difficulty. One of the classic practical difficulties is, is the land different than other land like in the township? This property is different. It has an easement along one side, that's very significant. It has an easement along the other side. Mr. Box indicated the total buildable area is significant, probably four times the building that's being put here. This board doesn't decide whether or not this building and this use can go into this place. That's not our purview, that's not our job. It's a completely different thing. The question is, can they reasonably build what's being asked to be built here? Or does the land cause something different to be happening? And, and here, they're building a, they're looking to build a building that is one-quarter the required size or the, the maximum allowed size for this parcel. If they put in all of the parking spots that they should by ordinance put in, they will start going into places that they shouldn't. So, if, which I know is not what you're looking for tonight, if you are looking at the fact that this use is appropriate, then the next question is, what is the, what is the best way to, to use this use? And I believe that less parking spaces is appropriate, considering the, the trade-off if they were to build into some of the easements and, and do other things of that nature. The property would be less valuable. It would be not as good for the residents. It would be more likely to cause glare closer to the houses, and I think it's a better use. Not necessarily something everybody's going to agree with, and I, I understand that, but I, I think it is the case here. So, my vote on this will be yes. I believe they have a practical difficulty, and at the point that they have a practical difficulty, it's not whether I like a project or not, it's my, my duty with regards to this position. So, I would somewhat echo what Mr. Piper said, and say I'm in support of it, but specifically, that is why. I believe that the property has a practical difficulty, and this is the best way to use the property, assuming it's going to get built on. Looking at less parking spaces, more green space, and more maneuvering room. That would be all of my comments. Unless anybody else has any comments, I think we will, we will call the roll on this item. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll?
Yes. Member Piper?
Yes.
Lawson, yes. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Posey?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. The next item that we should consider for a motion is the request to increase the height from 25 to 36 feet 2 inches. On this particular item, remember that we discussed a possible exception on the rear of making the vestibule opaque. Is there any motions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the height from 25 feet to 36 feet and 2 inches.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Does the petitioner have an opportunity before a vote is cast?
Can I ask, can I ask specifically what, what you are looking to request?
I'd like to request that we lower the height of the building by, you know, two feet, six inches, and we could?
Wait, wait, wait. Give the man his time to speak. This is, this is something I'm allowing as chair.
Can we have order, please? Thank you.
I believe, just one second, sir. Mr. Loyah, I just want to verify. We're in, we are now in discussion on the motion. Do I have the ability to give the petitioner the option to speak, or is that not in my leeway at the moment?
You have the right to seek clarification if there is a point. There is a motion on the floor. You're in the point of discussion. In the event that the petitioner seeks to request an amendment to its application, they may do so at this time, and the board may consider it as part of its motion. But you have to go through with the vote on your motion.
Yeah, we have to go through with the motion that we have. One further point of clarification, Mr. Loyah, if, if this is a motion to deny, and then the petitioner comes back with some modification, are we still able to vote on it? Or are we restricted by our, you cannot seek the same variance within a year?
I think that since the request for modification was made during the course of this hearing, I think that at that point, the board should consider whether or not to entertain that motion.
All right, to, to the petitioner then, I believe you have a modification. I'm going to take the vote on, on what we have on the floor, and then we'll look at discussion based on that. Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Lawson. I think we're going to call the roll on this one as well. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
Okay. Member Posey?
Yes.
Lawson, yes. Tuckfield?
No.
Piper?
Yes.
All right, so that motion passed, the variance is denied, and I believe now that I can, at my discretion, I can ask the petitioner to come up, and if he had a additional modification he would like to propose. And, and Mr. Loyah, I, I just want to make sure, stop me if I go into some point here that I shouldn't, because this is obviously?
You have the, you have the discrep- the request was made during the course of the hearing to amend the petition.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, just to further what I was going to say, we'd like to request to amend the motion or amend the application to lower the height of the building to 34 feet even, and lower the Meyer sign. So, it is, I think that's, would that be called, consistent with the height of the top of the, you know, see where the food and local is? That band, I think, is at 28 feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason? 26 feet 2 inches. So, the Meyer sign would be no higher than 26 2 inches. Okay. Jason just corrected me and said 26 4 inches. And I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with my offer.
I believe that I understand it. I would ask the board, does the board understand what the petitioner is proposing?
So, what is the total variance of the height? So, we understand that for the purpose of the motion?
Well, it went to 24, or pardon me, 34 from 25, so that'll be a total of nine feet, I believe. And then the sign would be lowered, which I don't think is technically applicable to the variance per se.
Yeah, I thought it would just might speak to some of your glare, your concern about the, how the red may?
Understood, but just to, to the variance, it's, it's more of a condition on the variance than it is actually a variance.
Thank you.
Yes. And I think the board understands. So, Mr. Loyah, just to verify, we have taken a motion on this issue. The petitioner has, petitioner has put forth a modification. So, the appropriate thing is I bring it back to the board, I ask for a motion, and if there's a motion, we vote on it. If there's no motions, we move on to the next item. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Box, just to make sure, do you have any comments before we move forward?
No, I, I was just going to say, what you said, it would be a contingent, something you could put as a contingent.
It would be a contingency. So, so to the board, if, if, if we were to take this and approve it, yeah, the Meyer sign would not be a variance, but it would be, it would be a contingent offer that I, that if we chose to go for it, I think would be wise to include in the motion. That being said, I will entertain motions on this issue. I am hearing no motions, and I am not going to propose one at this time, so that would die for lack of support. And we will move on to the next item. One thing I will say is we are close to the end of this meeting. Typically, what happens, we have a lot of people here. We get to the end of their item, and everybody stands up, and then nobody can hear everything or anything, and it takes a while. So, if people choose to leave now, I will call a recess. If you choose to stay, we have some pretty routine administrative stuff to do before the end. But just as a heads up, if you wish to go now, I'll call a recess. Just stand up if you would. And it looks like people do. We will allow public comments. There will be a later point, and I should make that clear. There is public comments. Actually, we have one more item, and then there will be general public comments. You are welcome to stay for. But if you wish to leave, like I said, I'll, I'll call a recess. It looks like most people are going to stay. So, we will proceed on to item 8E, which is the, actually, one more thing. Thanks, everybody, for staying patient through this. Petitioners, the residents, it's a long process for everybody, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Next item is 8E, the zoning board of appeal bylaw review. Mr. Box, could you speak on this? I think we're just mostly going to receive and file this, but?
Yeah, the, the point was that we just went through this with the planning commission. We're going to try to do this fairly regularly, yearly, or, or maybe bi-yearly, to review your bylaws, see if you have any concerns or, or changes that you wish to make. So, this, you're, you're right, this is more of just filing, you guys accepting it, and we'll come back at the next meeting with any comments or revisions that you may have.
Okay. And, and I would just mention, I had some discussions recently. I, I mentioned this to Mr. Loyah earlier, that I talked to Supervisor Viviano with regards to our method of, of motions. And the, the Board of Trustees is now in the flow of their meeting. When they start an item, they make a motion, and the motion is not, you do not have to make a motion and, and follow through with it, but to start the discussion, you make a motion. Somebody seconds it, then you discuss the item, and then you vote on it once you're done with discussions. And Supervisor Viviano had requested us to take a look at it. He's looking to have consistency through the board, which we've talked about this before, I think is an important thing. So, I talked to Mr. Loyah about it. There's some potential technicalities that might need to be worked out. He's going to speak with Mr. Viviano, and then I think that's probably an appropriate thing to look at as part of our bylaws, trying to make sure that there's continuity throughout the township, and that if someone is at one board, they don't have to learn an entirely new routine at the next board, which I think is, as much as we can do it, a valuable, a valuable thing to do. So, just keep that in mind. I know Dawn and I have been here for a while. It'll be, it'll be a little bit of muscle memory to get out of if we, if we start doing that, but I think it's a good thing to consider, and now is a good time to consider it, so. Unless there's any other comments on that, I know Dave had read these a little bit. I think what we want to do is, is read them tonight, and then bring them back in August with comments and, and discuss them. And obviously, Mr. Loyah, hopefully you'll have a chance to look at them. We've done the planning commission bylaws recently. We can probably look at them in context and, and see what we have.
Yes, there will be similar changes.
Okay, I, I assume there would be. All right, if there's no other comments on that item, I will move us on to item nine, which is public comments. Anyone may speak on this item. This is more of a general, a general commentary, although I will, as I mentioned earlier, this board has fairly narrow lanes. And we have, we do not have this item scheduled on our agenda in any other way in the future. So, you're, you are welcome to get up and speak, but I would just warn you that this body may not see this item again. And so, if you speak, keep that in mind. The next time this will come up will be at the planning commission. With that, I'm going to open up the public comments. If anybody here would like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please also keep in mind that we also have a four-minute time limit that I'll be keeping an eye on. And go ahead, sir. I don't know if you're standing up to speak, but feel free to, to go ahead.
I have a quick question first. Again, my name is John Pasquenzzo. I don't know if you need me to state my address again?
Probably not. We have it on the record, just as long as your name's there.
When you guys, nobody made a motion on that, his exception or him changing his height, what does that mean? What happens there?
I believe Mr. Loyah can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it, there was, there was no motion. Nothing happened. We, we didn't deny it, we didn't approve it, we didn't do anything.
That's right, but he does have the opportunity. You asked about the one year, so his petition was specific. He may make another modification, or there could be another requested variance, which difference for these requests.
And, and that, if it happened, would be advertised in the same way that this is. It gets advertised to any property within 300 feet. And I think we saw a pretty robust sharing on this, so I assume that if it happened again, it would certainly be, neighbors would certainly hear about it.
Yeah. Okay, and then I'll take this opportunity to also continue to speak about this, since I give four minutes. I have some major concern with this Meyer going in this, this subdivision area. This is completely suburban area. The infrastructure, the roads can't handle it. I think there needs to be some sort of traffic impact study done to see how this is going to impact us, and then how that's going to affect our tax dollars in the future. Is Meyer going to spend the dollars to expand 24 Mile? Is, are they going to spend the dollars to expand Hayes in order to accommodate the traffic? I don't know if you guys travel these areas with the schools, the subdivisions, and all the people. Now, you just rezoned the subdivision to be, come north of us, between us and Beck, which we really don't have an issue with overall, but how are these roads going to support it? How is this roundabout at 25 and Hayes going to handle that many cars coming through there? That is a big concern of us living in that area, as well as what's going to happen to our tax dollars and how much extra tax dollars we're going to have to pay to accommodate these road expansions, if it's even possible. We're concerned about our property values. I've talked to several real estate agents that sell homes for a living, and they say that the property values will go down 10 to 15 percent living that close to a grocery store. I mean, if, if I can hit a driving, you know, golf ball and hit the front of the store, that's a problem. The noise pollution, the light pollution, which we've already talked about. We have that gas main. There is a wall there that is supposed to divide us from this commercial property, C2 zone. But because of this gas main that's underground, they can't continue that wall, which leaves that opening. Now, that opening now provides for rodents, insect, all sorts of, I'm sorry, not insects, all sorts of things to be coming through that area, including people now walking to and from the store, not using the appropriate passages, which creates safety hazard. As well as that opening will allow all sorts of rodents through, which they will be now in our backyards. Because we all seen behind these stores and what happens with the, with the litter, that the, you know, the grease pits and all the, the pollution back there that, that just accumulates, because these stores do not maintain them. Another thing I would like to talk about is the C2 zoning is, in my, when I read the zoning, I thought it only called for a maximum of two pumps for a gas station. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're on plan for five pumps. That would be against the zoning, if I'm correct. And if I'm speaking incorrectly, somebody please correct me.
Just so you know, you're at about four minutes.
Okay. Last thing I'd like to say, and I'll stop, is one of the big chemicals in gasoline is benzene. Benzene is proven to cause cancer in human beings. For every thousand gallons of gasoline pumped, about 1.6 to 1.7 gallons becomes vapor. Where's all that vapor going? In our subdivisions. We don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Lehman. I'm at 16447 Trailway Drive, so I'll be to the east of the development also. Mr. Tuckfield, are you on the planning commission also?
I am.
I hope you've heard tonight what we as residents believe and feel about this project, and I hope you take that back. I will be there on the 20th. I hope everybody else will be too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, name's Ryan Tangler. Reside at 15368 Amberfield Drive. I'd like to touch on a few topics. One is the infrastructure. It simply cannot handle this development. We actually reached out to the county and asked if there was any plans in the next five to 10 years to widen this area or redo 24 and Hayes, and they said there is not. The traffic in this area is already dangerous to the residents, and by adding a Meyer and a gas station along with another subdivision that's slated to be built with 100-plus homes will greatly impact the safety of our children and residents. Not to mention, there's absolutely no need for another grocery store. I believe there's like 11 grocery stores between Shelby and McComb Township. Anytime you develop a large structure like this, especially something with 400 parking spots, you're inviting all kinds of illicit activity, such as loitering, littering, drug activity, theft. I mean, even if you look at Kroger, I've read in the paper, they've had issues with sex trafficking just because of the amount of people, you know, that are hanging out there. Also make note that dividing wall that John was talking about, it can't be closed off. I mean, I believe at SEMCO, they have to be able to service that. And then, not to touch, you know, to touch on, you know, our real estate. There's been notable studies that have been done that show that property values decrease up to fifteen-hundred percent when neighboring a grocery store, gas station. As at the homes in Gateway Village are up in the higher end of the residential tax base in this township, with Zillow having the homes in this area from anywhere between five hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand plus. Building a gas station near a school and a subdivision has children playing, it's definitely not safe. Anytime you have a gas station, hydrocarbons produce vapors. Vapors from gas and diesel contain benzene, both of which are cancer-causing agents. The National Institute of Health and fossilfuel.com have performed studies that have shown that children are at fourfold for developing childhood leukemia, along with other types of cancers and breathing problems. The study also noted that pregnant mothers were far more likely to develop birth defects. So I ask you this question, would you like a gas station next to your child, you know, your child's school or in your backyard? And then, this is kind of ended here. I have about sixteen years in the fire service. There's always been one quote that's stuck with me, and it's by Gordon Graham, "It's predictable, it's preventable." And if it ever stands true, I think making the right decision is definitely, you know. But I, just to end, I encourage the board to make the right decision for our township, our residents, and our children. Thank you.
All right, my name is Charles Gray, once again, I live at two-seven-six-four-three North Willowood Drive. So one thing I forgot to point out is the safety, or the crime wa, crime rate. So I happen to be one of the admins for Macomb County Scanner on Facebook. And I'm going back, all these retail fraud posts we've been doing from Meyer. We've heard a lot of break-ins, retail fraud, even sex trafficking, that's one of the biggest ones that I'm concerned with. So I put in this Meyer here in front of a school. I don't think that would be appropriate, especially with kids playing outside. And then also the fact that the, the gas station was brought up a couple times, the benzene inside the fuel, which would ca, which would cause health problems as well. So I really think you guys should consider that. And really, just, it's, that's just the main concern I have, is really the crime rate and the safety, especially given the retail frauds, you know, that we hear every day, and it happens more often than you know it, so. That's something I would be concerned about.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Carlson, five-three-one-seven-one Bayberry. In nineteen ninety-two, when we built our home, just where you pointed out, I did look at what everything was. It was farms, we had a whole lot of trees, and we had, you know, really nothing else going there. We were told at the time, you know, maybe light industrial, but it was just the first, like, six houses. This is what I was told back in nineteen ninety-two when we did that. I did do my homework. I've been living there for thirty years. Let me ask you this question. If all these people show up and more, and the planning commission, and people give you concise arguments that aren't just delved in emotion, because this is a very emotional thing, do you guys even have the authority to halt this? It seems like the gentleman over there and these gentlemen, this is already a done deal, and now we're just kind of crossing some Ts and dotting some Is. This is concerning for me. We are all putting it, this, I was on vacation last week when I got this notice that we're having this meeting, and I realize, you know, you guys have a job to do too, but why would a company want to come into a place? You could build a smaller, I know this is a small Meyer, something smaller, something other that's commercial, that does not give, this, this building is going to back right up to my home. I'm going to have to hear, you know, you got the trash compactors, you got the mice, all the stuff with the wall. Regardless of all that, do you even have, is, can this even be stopped? Are we all just spinning our wheels because we have to do this, because it's the politically correct thing to do? Or, or is this really a done deal? This is very disheartening that all this is happening, and there seems like people have brought up so many other places in Macomb Township. I guess the township would love the revenue, we've grown, like I said, I've been here since nineteen ninety-two, it's a long time. There's east of Romeo Plank, north of Twenty-Four to Twenty-Six Mile, there are so many places there, again. Build a place there and let people choose where they want to buy. I guess something's going to eventually be built here. But if we need variances because light and things aren't actually fitting in with their plan, maybe that's not the right property for the plan. Thank you.
If I may, ma'am. I'll ask Mr. Box and Mr. Aloya to answer the question if they can. There is a line between what we can answer tonight, what we can't, but we'll bring that back up when, when we're done here. Go ahead.
Hi, Amanda Opelousky again. I think there is an underlying understanding, at least from me, that there is nothing that you guys can do to say, "We just don't want a Meyer on this property." You legally cannot say that. I have that understanding, and I do hope that everyone here does also have that understanding. But what is in the township's purview, as I stated earlier, is that to adhere to the zoning code. This is Zone C-two, I did do the research before, I bought my house in twenty seventeen, and I'm familiar with the builder, he built our sub as well, the person who owns this property, and it was slated to have a strip mall, which is entirely what we expected, and I, I think it would be fair to say that the other residents also expected that as well. That is what you see in other C-two zonings on street corners in the township. And as I stated, also again, this type of development with these variances doesn't fit the C-two, it's more of a C-three or a C-four. And so, going back to what you were saying, I completely agree, like, I did my research, I am familiar with the zoning, I think a lot of us are as well, and I think it is understandable that, yes, we understand that the township can't legally say, "We, we don't want a Meyer here," that they can't do that. But what you can do, and I know that you have the power to do, is to say, "If you put something here, please adhere to our zoning code." And I think that's what everyone is asking for. And I know it's very heated and emotional, and, but it's just asking our officials to do what they said they were going to do in the first place, which is to keep it C-two. And I remember when this property was up for a complete rezoning, about a year, maybe two years ago, to residential, that would have ended up being a three-story apartment unit. Some of the same, the very same concerns that we're addressing here with building height. And I remember a comment being made that the township spent a lot of money on a master plan study, and they wound up saying, "This needs to be C-two, we want this to be C-two." So to then take all of these variances into consideration, it's really not a C-two anymore. You're making it a C-three or a C-four. So that is all I think that we're asking, is that our officials stick to the plan. The original master plan that was expensive, and, and that just follow what we're asking, what we've all agreed to. By moving in, we know it's C-two, this is not a C-two development. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We also have a petition, over ninety percent of our residents in Gateway did sign it, regarding just these variances. We do have that, if you would like to see it, or if we can enter it into the public record, I'm not sure how that works. And then there is also an online petition with over thirty-three hundred signatures, just in general, not wanting the Meyer there. But as far as Gateway Village is considered, we do have something specifically related to the variances that were considered, if you would like to see it, thank you.
I appreciate it, and, and I think your time is up, actually, I let you go past your time, I wasn't looking at it. If you bring that petition to the planning commission, I think we can probably make it a part of the record. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Linda Maynerich again, my husband Adam Maynerich, one-five-seven-two-one Camden Drive. Going to go over what I was originally going to say. "We feel that these requests exceed the proper use and zoning of the piece of property that borders our quiet, peaceful neighborhood. The lot size cannot accommodate the required four hundred and fifty parking spaces, and that is why they're asking for four hundred spaces. Can you imagine an additional four hundred cars and however many delivery trucks on top of the already congested intersection and the backups on Twenty-Four Mile Road and Hayes?" They're also asking for signed variances, which I know got tabled today, but those will be, those, they're not going to shut those off. We will see those in our, in our neighborhoods. We will see those in our windows. Those delivery trucks are going to come all day, all night. We are going to hear all that noise, we won't be able to keep our windows open at night, because we're going to hear all of that noise, we're going to have all that light shining through, all of the exhaust fumes from the delivery trucks and, and the cars that are coming in and out of that parking lot. The infrastructure is not a com, it, it, there is an elementary school less than a mile away. There is a preschool, as we've seen in the drawings, right there. We have a high school with new drivers just less than a mile away, down on Twenty-Four Mile Road. I hear on a daily basis, pretty, there is accidents at that intersection, it's one way, each way. How is anyone going to turn left, left out of that parking lot on either road, on Twenty-Four Mile Road or Hayes? They won't be able to. As it is me taking my, my ten-year-old son to the elementary school in the morning, I'm sitting there waiting almost five minutes just to pull out onto Twenty-Four Mile Road. I am just the street east, right next to where this Meyer would go. I also have a sixteen-year-old daughter, so the thought of sex trafficking in parking lots at a Meyer scares the hell out of me and my ten-year-old son. The gas fumes, the exhaust fumes, the rats and mice, and yes, I know somebody who was a manager at a Meyer, and he told me that the trash compactor, just the sound of the trash compactor at the back of the store, which is going to butt up to all of our neighborhoods, just the noise from it, let alone the smell. He said that smell is going to waft through your neighborhood. And, and nobody has talked about where the delivery trucks are going to be parked. Where is the parking for that? I didn't see it on that site plan. How is it going to go in and out? The Maco, I've lived in Macomb Township since nineteen ninety-seven. That was a nursery on that property. They sold trees and bushes there. That's what was there. And then, yes, we were told maybe a strip mall. You go to any strip mall, and you probably see at most thirty, forty cars in the parking lot. They want four hundred parking spaces, and then how many? Eight of them being designated for three minutes at a time, coming in and out? Sometimes sit at that parking, just sit at that corner and watch the numbers of buses during the school year that go through that intersection. It is going to delay our kids getting to school, and it's going to delay kids getting home from school, let alone the safety issues of cars pulling in and out of there.
Ma'am, just so you know, you're at, you're at four minutes, just so you know.
She gets eight minutes, she gets my four as well.
Typically, typically, we try to have the person who's speaking take the time. If, if you'd like to pick up, you're more than welcome to pick up. I don't mean to disrupt you, but that is how we run it.
I'll have to say, and I appreciate how difficult your job is, and I know this is, there's trying times, like this one with a lot of the community. Now, I, I recognize that you're in a position really to support the community as a whole. This is one that clearly you're, hopefully you are getting a lot of feedback from the people that live in the area, because we don't want this here. We don't, we understand you can only vote on the, the two ordinance that are at hand. I appreciate you recognizing that we did buy our homes, recognizing that there is a potential for having something up to twenty-five feet, and we understand that. Any of these variances that go beyond that, that, that is something that we want your support, that you want to stand by what the ordinance are in the area, especially when it's so, so close to the neighboring community. You know, personally, I've, you know, I've, I've lived here for, you know, fifteen years. Five years ago, I drove through that Hayes and Twenty-Four Mile, and it was the first time I seen for an accident of a driver turning and running over a motorcyclist. He lost his life. This is going to be one additional distraction at that congested intersection already. Okay? We don't need anymore when, in such a close-knit area, and fam, I mean, I recognize a lot of the people in here, you know? John over here coached my kids' flag football team, you know? We, we, we want something here for a nice community, we don't need another business in here. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Lang again. I just wanted to say that I think everybody's done a pretty good job of, you know, speaking their minds, and I'm agreement with a lot of these guys, you know, is this a done deal? And again, I just want to appeal to Meyer and say, "Hey, there's tons of land out there, this looks great. Take these plans, move them down to Twenty-three and Hayes, and, you know, I, I think it'd be great down there." That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who is here? Not seeing any, Mr. Ivanowski. I should, I should actually mention if anybody in the public is, actually, is there any in the public still left? Sometimes we, we don't have anybody at this point, I should say on, on Zoom.
No, there's no way currently, I'm wanting to speak.
Okay. With that, then, I'm going to close the public portion and move on to ZBA member comments. Anybody have any comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that I appreciate everybody's heartfelt comments. We understand where you're coming from, it's emotional, and you live there. Obviously, we've explained several times that our position on this board is restricted to the variances, and I feel we all did our best to honor those. But all those concerns that you have need to be addressed at the planning commission, which they mentioned is, what, July twentieth? That's where any type of site plan is addressed. The trucking, the exits, the entrances for the trucking, all those concerns that you have are taken into consideration at that meeting, so we are listening to you. Please forward those concerns over to the planning commission so that they can consider, be considered. I will leave it up to Mr. Aloya, our attorney, if he could answer the question, "Is it a done deal?" It is zoned for commercial for C-two, but you can take the, if you can answer that question for them, I think they would appreciate it.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's no done deal, it's zoned for a supermarket. So when we say that you, you can't change the zoning, the fact of the matter is the owner owns a C-two parcel, okay? And so the permitted uses is a supermarket, so the township doesn't have the standing to tell them you can't put a supermarket in there because it's zoned for it. Now, the question becomes, this zoning board only has the purview for the two variances that were brought before it, and it, it made those decisions tonight on those variances. The planning commission's job is to determine site plan issues. But again, the planning commission will not be deciding whether or not you can put a supermarket there. The issue is whether the site plan meets the ordinance, and of course, the site plan, just to forewarn people, if the, if the aspects of the site plan meet the zoning ordinance, the planning commission will be bound to really decide favorably on those aspects. There are some discretionary things the planning commission will have, such as granting special land uses and things like that. So we're not saying this is a done deal, but you have to understand as a municipality, there's rules and regulations and things that we follow, and when things fall in conformity with, with what we have, we're bound to follow those as well, and the alternative, if they're not, is that the township gets sued, and certainly, we don't want our tax dollars being paid to Meyer for damages. So we follow the law within, and, but there are discretionary things, and those things were discussed tonight, and the ZBA made those decisions tonight, and the planning commission will make some discretionary calls coming up. So that's really where it is.
So I would just like to conclude in saying that the township didn't seek out Meyer to come here and be put on that particular lot. There's a developer that owns that land and that property, and they, they've made an agreement with Meyer and are discussing the development of potential development on that piece of property. We have no control over that, the developer owns that land, and it's zoned accordingly. So just keep that in mind, and, you know, I thank you for coming out and expressing all of your concerns, and it will be, they will be heard at the planning commission meeting as well. Yes, that's correct. At six-thirty.
At six-thirty, yeah. Any other comments from the board members?
I will just say that this was a very interesting meeting, it's very different from our normal meetings, and I, I took all the comments to heart. You know, I had a very narrow window of what I could consider, but I'm glad the residents were here to voice their opinion. but I'm glad the residents were here to voice their opinion. Mr. Tuckfield, you know, I used to be the one in the audience all the time, and many times I was the only one in the audience. But, yeah, it's good to see the township residents getting involved. I'm happy to see that. Hopefully, going forward, something will happen that will make all parties at least comfortable, if not happy. That's just my opinion.
Very good. Ms. Lawson, anything for you this evening?
They covered it.
I did have one thing that I think I misspoke on earlier, and that is that we wouldn't have this item come back before the board. I believe we tabled the sign exceptions to our next meeting.
That's correct.
So, I misspoke on that. There will be something on the August meeting with regards, I believe the August meeting.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially. So, Mr. Box, will that get advertised for that, or how will that work?
No, it was postponed to the next meeting, so the advertisement has already taken place. It will be on the next agenda, it may get postponed or tabled again, or it may get dismissed.
So, what I would recommend to the community leaders who are here, it's going to be on the agenda. I wouldn't overwhelm the office with calls, but call Mr. Box in another couple of weeks, and you'll have an idea. You know, it'll still be on the agenda, but that will give you an understanding if we are expecting to hear it or expecting to postpone it again. And we'll be going through the same process on those as well. We'll be giving Mr. Box to talk about the staff, the petitioners will talk about their application, and the residents will have the chance to speak, and I think you saw it tonight. Your comments were heard. Were they all taken in the way that you wanted to? Obviously, that's up for you to decide, but hopefully, it was obvious, we do listen. We try to do our best to do our job and make sure that we're doing this correctly. So, I wanted to correct that misspeak on my part. And the last thing, I would just echo, I think, what everybody else said here. I've been to a lot of meetings over the last 10 years. I've been in the audience, I've been the public before, I've talked on things that I was passionate about. It's not easy to do. It's not easy to come in and hear all the things that you don't necessarily understand and have them affect your property. I get that. I sit on the planning commission, I can tell you, you may or may not recognize me, but I've walked your subdivision multiple times in the last two weeks. It means something to me. I've walked the subdivision to the north a couple times, I was walking it on Sunday. I've walked the subdivisions to the east, I've been through there. It makes a difference to me, it matters to me. I know what I have the leeway to do, and so there is restrictions to there. But everyone on this board, and everyone on the planning commission board who you will see on the 20th, are citizens of this township, they care about it. So, I'm not going to say we're always going to come to decisions you like, and I know that it affects you personally, but I just want you to understand, these are people on these boards, and they do try to do the right thing. So, just come at it with that understanding, and we'll see you again in another couple of weeks, and we'll go through the process, and I really appreciate everyone coming out.
Can I add one more thing?
Go ahead, Mr. Piper.
I just would like to commend the audience for their restraint too, tonight. Like you said, it's very passionate how they feel about it, and I thought they were very respectful of us and the petitioner.
I would agree, it's not an easy thing to go through. So, with that being said, I think we're on to planning director comments. Mr. Box, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, I guess the only thing I would say is the next ZBA meeting is Thursday, August 5th. I know...
We now have a couple items on that agenda.
ZBA meets the first Thursday of every month, and there are many months throughout the year that we may not meet because we don't have items, and I would have been telling you we have no items for next month, but we now have three, so we will be here next month.
Okay, very good. Mr. Skurdo, anything you want to add? All right, with that, we're going to move...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, and as of 9:44, we stand adjourned.